Call immediate order at 7:12. Welcome, everyone. Nice, fun crowd here today. Thank you for being here on a beautiful summer day. Public comments, current and future agendas. Let's see, we have a lot of public. I don't know if you all had a specific item or if there's anybody who would just like to speak. Comments? Looks like everybody...
I think we're here to start on science.
Starting on science. We will be, I think, I think we're going to get there pretty quick. Yeah, it's pretty quick. We'll be right there. Thank you. All right. Adopt the minutes of June 21st. I would entertain that motion. Motion by Father Robb, second by Richard. Any discussion, questions, concerns about the minutes of July 21st? Minutes of June 21st. None? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. The ayes have it. Motion carries. All right. I guess, right to science.
A little more excitement in there.
Dennis, can you hear her? You want me to turn that band-aider off?
I'm good.
Okay.
Who wants to start?
Well, I'll just say, after last month's meeting, there was some discussion about the science offerings here at MBU. I contacted Jen. We sat down and discussed it that next Monday. She had meetings with Jim Daly and then we arranged to have a meeting that we had this Tuesday. Monday. A few days ago. On Monday, we had a nice meeting with, I think there were 12 or more community members in attendance, and we talked about what we're doing currently. We listened to concerns, talked about possibilities and got some input. And Jen has taken that input and wants to share what we're doing and why, and what the concerns are and how some of those are being addressed. We also had another conversation with Jim Daly after the conversation and input from the community.
Great. Okay. Take the lead.
All right. So, the pieces of my presentation this evening, I have an overview of the current course model that we use, including the course progression that we have. I'll talk a little bit about the work of the past five years that we've done. I'll address those current concerns that were brought up by the community group that we had together on Monday. I'll share with you the proposed actions that the administrative team will be taking, and then I'll share with you the feedback that the group gave us about those actions on Monday. So, the curriculum model that we use is called the Conceptual Understanding Model from the Next Generation Science Standards, and it's one of the recommended curriculum models from the people who authored the standards. The NGSS, as they're called, have been adopted by the state of Vermont, and their intent, when they were written, was to revolutionize science instruction. So, the way that Mr. Daly likes to phrase it is, "It's not an evolution, it's a revolution." And the model integrates different disciplines of science. So, the Conceptual Understanding Model intentionally creates science programming that incorporates life science, earth science, and physical science together to better...
Did you hold up there for a second?
Yep.
You know, and I agree with a lot of this, but with the way you want to change things, it also should have the Ag science in there. We've got to go back to get our Ag science, and everybody seems to be skipping over that because that used to be a science. And I think that that's going to be added back in, the Ag science part. If we're going to make the changes, I think we've got to cover, we're going to cover all levels of kids. I think we've got to cover the Ag level too, and that needs to come back in. I don't know if anybody's mentioned that, but I think that's one of the big pluses because the advisory board is trying to do things, and I think this is when you're making the move, I think the Ag is going to be added in too.
So, the piece that I'm explaining right now is about the current science programming that we offer, not necessarily the changes that we might be making.
But what I'm saying was, it got taken out somehow. And now, it's not, it's not offered as a, as a science, the Ag. And it used to be, for years, it was offered as a science. The kids had a choice, you know? And I believe they need a excelled one, and they need a earth one, but they also need that Ag, you know, horticulture and all that, because that's Ag, and we've got to go back to that.
And we can continue to talk about how to bolster Ag...
And I don't think we should make any moves until that's added. That's a big one, Jen, and I'm going to push that because, you know, again, I think you're leaving kids out that they'd be better off over there than they would be here. And I think that's an interruption sometimes to these other kids, you know, they're better off over there. And I'm going to, I'll probably interrupt you a few times tonight, but I'm going to keep pushing that.
Okay. So, the programming that we're discussing is based on the Next Generation Science Standards, which is a different set of standards than the agricultural science standards, and it's a different license. So, part of the reason that they've been separated out is because our teachers have different types of endorsements to teach different types of subject areas. So, one of the other aspects of the Conceptual Understanding Model is it shifts the focus from content memorization to building science literacy. So, it includes things like science and engineering practices and cross-cutting concepts that move throughout the curriculum. The important cross-cutting concepts reappear intentionally in something called spiraling throughout the course of the curriculum in an attempt to broaden and deepen understanding. And the new science assessment that students took for the first time this year in grade eight and 11, and I believe five, is based on this set of standards, and it's the first time that we've had this assessment. It was a field test, and we'll have data back about that soon, hopefully.
Jen, I'm familiar with spiraling, but I'm not sure everybody else would be, so if you can talk just for a second about what it means.
So, spiraling, I can give a specific example. So, one of the concepts that has been placed in the curriculum and is intentionally spiraled has to do with energy transfer. And in the, in the lower grade levels, they look a lot at food webs and food chains. As, as students get older, that understanding should broaden and deepen and come up again, but not necessarily in the exact same content. So, the programming as it appears in the program of studies right now, we have Science nine, Science 10, and Science 11, and those are required courses. In grade nine, students have the option to take CP Earth and Space. It's a one semester elective. In grade 10, students have the option to take CP Biology. That's also a one semester elective. And then, on the right-hand side, are some of the other electives that we offer. Chemistry has been broken into two semester-long classes based on topics, as well as physics and environmental science. And then, we offer a semester of anatomy, a semester of physiology, a semester of forensic science and robotics, and we also offer AP Biology. So, those are the courses as they currently are. So, over the past five years, and I believe Mr. Daly was here three or four years ago sharing the changes with the board, the department has written an integrated curriculum, and they implemented it step by step. The first step was in 2015 and 16 and included grades six, seven, and nine. The second year included grades eight and 10, and the third year, which was this year, included grade 11. This curriculum has made sure that all students have access to our guaranteed curriculum. So, it's written based, it's written to align with proficiency-based learning, to make sure that our, all of our students are leaving with guaranteed outcomes. And the whole department participated in the development of the curriculum. They did it together. So, even if teachers did not teach grade nine, they all worked on the development together so that they could see how it worked together vertically throughout the six through 11 They also have created a set of common scoring tools for the science and engineering practices and cross-cutting concepts, and these are the same scoring tools that they use for the science fair as well, so that they can calibrate and collaborate across. Teachers can make sure that they're scoring assignments in the same way from those skills. The semester-based classes for CP Biology, Chemistry, and Physics has led to, in general, and I know there are specific students who are exceptions to this, but has generally led to fewer scheduling conflicts because it's semester-based and not year-long, and greater scheduling possibility. So, when we met with the group on Monday night, we recorded their concerns, and there were many concerns, and I didn't capture all of them here, but I tried to put pieces of them in, and I have multiple slides for the concerns. And we talked about lots of different things, not just science. So, some of these pieces would apply to other subject areas as well, I think. So, one of the concerns that the parents and students who were with us on Monday brought up was that advanced students report that they feel disengaged, and their peers need more time or need more review or could be disruptive. There's a disconnect between where the curriculum was written. Curriculum was written on grade-level standards, but the implementation of that work is not necessarily at the challenge level we hoped for. There's a perception that the coursework is not challenging enough for students to get into the competitive colleges that they're interested in.
Jen?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Could you just kind of give me, ask a little bit of an explanation of what you mean by a guaranteed outcome concerning a standard?
Right. So, that's a great question. So, when there's a guaranteed outcome concerning a standard, we have to make sure that all students access it and that all students meet it. And so, the curriculum for Science nine, 10, and 11 basically outlined the content and concepts that we're guaranteeing our students leave with. Does that help?
It does.
Okay. Thank you.
In other words, dumbing it down?
Nope. They're grade-level standards. They're, they're grade-level standards. Now, whether our instruction is meeting the grade-level standard is one of the things that I think we're concerned about.
So, that, what you're saying is that's the minimum expectation, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, the minimum, it doesn't allow any specific provisions for accelerated options.
So, I was just explaining what our guaranteed, what guaranteed outcomes are, and that they are based, you know, on grade levels. Grade-level standards. Yep. There, one of the concerns that was expressed is that there's a fear that our current programming isn't preparing students for post-secondary opportunities, specifically in STEM areas. That our...
STEM?
STEM. Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics is the acronym for STEM. And that our programming is not necessarily consistent with other regional high schools in the area. Another concern that was brought up was that students might not be able to advance, or excuse me, access the classes early enough, the advanced classes early enough, to get into the college programs, especially medical fields or science fields. Other concerns that were brought up, when you look at what colleges say they're looking for in their applicants, it's not necessarily reflected in our program of studies.
Can I please add something to that because I don't think that's exactly what I said in our meeting. The high school program of study specifically says that to get into a two-year college, a four-year college, an advanced college, a highly competitive college, you need to have these specific courses, and they are biology, chemistry, physics, depending upon what college you're trying to get into. So, my concern was that what we're offering here, this half-year CP Biology, might not meet that college requirement if you want to get into that highly competitive college.
Because the expectation, the continuously, the expectation is that you have a full-year-long coursework of college prep biology.
So, half semester, how many, how many hours, how many minutes are they in a class?
So, the classes are 82 minutes into a semester. You have to do the math every other day.
And if they had it a full year, what would be the number of minutes in a class period?
It's still 82 minutes per period that it'd be every other day. I thought that was a trick question.
No, no. I know, I want to ask because it does come up to minutes, and you can, on a block schedule, I don't want to go into that, but on different kinds of schedules, you can get the same number of minutes in a shorter period of time, whether it's a semester as opposed to a whole year, but you still get the same material, you just have longer time with the teacher. So, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, and that's not necessarily what we...
So, they're only meeting every other day now?
Every other day with block schedule.
And that really isn't enough, is it?
So, they have the longer classes, but...
Chemistry was four mods, five days a week.
It was.
When I was here.
Yep. It was, and it went down to one and a half, and just recently went down to one in addition to Science.
So, how come it's going down? How come it's going down every time?
Yep. So, when a student is signed up for Chemistry every day, for a solid block every day, it, one of the reasons we went away from that was that it's harder to schedule that student for all of the classes that they wanted. Now, I know many students still feel like they cannot get the classes that they want, but scheduling a student for a double block makes it harder to get the choices that they, that they want to get. There's a lot of reasons for that.
So, another thing that I'd like to add to this concern is that if a college is choosing who they're going to accept as a student, are they going to look at a transcript from a kid that comes from a high school where they offer full-year courses in these areas, and then look at an MBU student and say, "Wow, this kid got, had all of this," and do they weigh in the same when the college is choosing who they accept and who they don't accept? Is it, do other schools perhaps have an advantage to our kids?
And one of the things that college admissions officials will say is that they review the school profile when they're looking at college applicants, and the school profile is basically a short document that explains how we offer our program in here. And there is a specific section in our school profile that describes our science programming and how it was designed, and how it might be different than what other schools offer, but why we have that. So, college admission officers look at a variety of different transcripts when they're reviewing student applications, and they often contact guidance counselors and look at the school profile to find out more about the kids before they admit students.
Why, why do we have such a problem now with getting kids in classes? When we had, when we had 1,200 kids, it seemed, maybe it was problematic, and I was here, but it seemed like there was less problems. Everybody took what they wanted, and then how come it's a problem now?
Building, building a schedule for a high school is a very complex puzzle.
And I understand that, but when we had 1,200 kids, we were able to do it. Now, we're down to 800 kids, and we can't do it.
And I don't, I wasn't in the role that I'm in now when we had that many students, so I don't know how easy it was to schedule those students' schedules now.
Scheduling the smaller number of students you have, the less FTEs, which is the number of teachers that you have assigned to a specific area, it is harder to schedule in a smaller school than it is to schedule in a larger, which sounds odd, but it's the truth because it spreads easier across the board. So, that's part of, part of the issue, having been in an 800-member school.
And one of the other pieces is when our enrollment has decreased, maybe we only offer one section of Chemistry now instead of two. And so, all the kids who want to be in Chemistry have to be in that one class, and if that meets at the same time as AP Literature, then that creates a problem in the schedule. So, when we build the schedule, what we do is we take classes that there's only going to be one section of, and it's often advanced classes, and we put them on the board first, opposite each other, so there won't be those conflicts. So, some of the other concerns that were brought up at the meeting, and this was one of the big ones, is that the scheduling conflicts that the science electives cause often force students to make unwanted choices. Students reported that they had to maybe not take a music class that they were interested in, or not take another year of foreign language. There were general concerns around the shift to proficiency-based learning, not just specific to science, and there were general concerns about communication with parents and students about changes. So, what I'm going to do now is share the steps that the administration is moving forward on for next year, and then I'll share a little bit of the feedback that the group from Monday gave about those steps. So, one of the pieces that we moved forward on after this concern came up in April, and I believe you saw this at the last meeting or the one before that, is the flexible pathway for Science 11. So, for students who were proficient in CP Biology, we provided some options for them in grade 11. The other piece, which I think might be new to you, and it's on the second page of the packet, is something we're calling an honors credential. And so, the department leaders, and this is for all four core classes beginning next year.
Excuse me, Jen, did they get the class?
Many of them got it the other night, but they might not...
Yeah.
Very good? Okay. So, the honors credential is an opportunity to recognize students for going above and beyond expectations on certain criteria within their core programming. Specifically, there's content criteria, but also habits of work criteria because we were noticing that students and teachers were reporting that they were not necessarily ready with the specific work habits that they needed to take AP courses and do all enrollment courses and more advanced coursework. So, we wanted to make sure that we were creating in grades nine and 10, but starting in grade nine, increased expectations for students who would like to pursue those options. As you may already know, we have dedicated data team time for our teachers here at Mississippi State to work on curriculum assessment and instruction, and we were chatting with Mr. Daly yesterday about making sure that that time is refocused on instruction. One of the things that really has been clear to me in this whole process is that there's a significant gap between the curriculum that's written and how it's actually being delivered, and that is an instructional concern, not necessarily a curricular concern. And so, really making sure that that time is spent very intentionally on instructional planning and that we pay special attention to that spiraling so that concepts that reemerge don't just feel like review, that they actually reemerge to broaden and deepen student understanding. We would like to really focus on instruction. We've been focusing on instruction as a full supervisory union over the past few years, but the Science Department, since they've been writing their curriculum, has been focused on their curriculum. Now that the curriculum has been written, we can really focus on instruction. We work with a consultant, and she's very skilled at supporting integrated curriculum with the NGSS, and I've been in contact with her, talking about how we want to focus specifically on engagement so that students don't report that they're feeling disengaged, that we focus specifically on meeting students' needs. So, when there are a variety of different types of student need in the classroom, how are we meeting those best to our ability? And rigor, so that it's challenging for students. We have an instructional coach on staff. We can focus the energies of the instructional coach into science in this way.
And then, over the past years, you've been working a lot on differentiated instruction.
We've been working a lot on instruction specifically, yeah, and engagement. I think that differentiation, though, so differentiated instruction is where teachers prepare different instructional methods for different groups of students within the same classroom. There was a lot of momentum toward differentiated instruction in the early to mid 2000s, and I think the focus on guaranteed outcomes and proficiency-based learning kind of pushed that aside a little bit, but now that we have a better handle on guaranteed outcomes, we can return to, okay, now we know what the outcomes are for all kids. How can we differentiate to make sure that all kids meet that and that kids have opportunity to exceed it as well?
And I ask about that because of Eric's question about dumbing down because differentiated instruction allows you to really focus on really high level attainment for students who are operating at a high level and those who aren't operating quite at a high level, you can work your instruction so that you can focus different pieces and differentiate based on where the kids are in the classroom. Right? Does that make sense?
Yep. And then, we can commit an increased presence of observation with, through peer observation, but also the coaches can participate in observations and the administration can participate instructional, in observations of instruction as well and provide feedback. Some of the other things that we're looking into for next year, we're investigating scheduling possibilities to provide an accelerated path through the CP electives, and that's outlined on the back page of the packet that I gave you. And we were actually, when we first planned this out, we thought we were a year out from this. We're going to try to look at the schedule and see what we can do to move this along a little faster. It will be, it will be tough, but we will, we will do our best. We will have the field test data from the standardized test for science soon, and we will look at that data and reflect on it and look at how we compare to the standard and to other schools. We'd like to incorporate frequent and ongoing surveys of parents, students, and teachers, and really focus those survey questions on engagement and rigor. And we're also going to try to see where we can find resources to participate in the Vermont Virtual Learning Consortium, which is, I think it used to be called Virtual High School. It's an online portal for other opportunities for students so that we have more choices.
That might help for some of those students who just can't make the schedule work, and they have to make a choice, and those courses should still be rigorous and aligned to the standards.
Some of the pieces that we're looking at further along, we'd like to extend the honors credential up to grade 10, not just in Science, but in other areas. We'd like to figure out how we can increase our dual enrollment options, our AP options, and the Learning Consortium options in Science specifically. We talked about that with Mr. Daly yesterday. These are pieces that we could prepare for the program of studies when we write that in November and December.
We've got to do something about the Ag. That is a big thing. That's a big thing here, and it's still, there's an eighth grader right now that's got goats and wants to be part of the Ag, but she can't. Because it should be open, Science like it used to be, Ag Science. Because you're talking things now, they don't have enough time over there. You're skipping over things, man, and I'm going to keep haunting you. You get those Ag kids that want to do Ag out of here, that's going to help these kids over here better off. Because if I'm in a, in a class stuck with those kids, I'm going to be a pest because I get what I want over there. You know, you keep going over and over, but you're missing the point. That's one of my reasons on this school board is that Ag building still runs, and you people are fighting me.
I'm not fighting you at all.
You know, because they need longer hours over there.
I agree.
You know, but nothing's happening. It's like, I might as well go home and talk to my daughter. You know? Come on! I know I get worked up, but...
You don't get too worked up.
Okay.
I'm going to write that down, though.
Well, and, you know, I've mentioned the Ag program before too because that is a successful one, but I think right now we're just focusing here because the Ag program, while it's part of this, is going to have to be just kind of a separate component we discussed separately because this is focused on...
No, but it isn't, Father. You're missing the point, too. It used to be part of the science, and they took it away.
It was an option.
There was an option. That was part of the science, and they took it away. And now, now kids got to pass the earth science. They can't, if they're good in the agriculture or the horticulture, whatever, they, they got to do this other science. You see what I'm talking? You know? I've been around here for 30, 40-some-odd years, and I know what's going on. I've been around here for thirty, forty-some-odd years, and I know what's going on.
Yes, I hear you.
That was a discussion that we had in the meeting was, and it's under, I have copies of all of your lists. The ideas for the future was maple sugaring, and I know Kim has brought up in the past to make sure that there's pathways, learning pathways for kids who wanna be involved in agriculture and whatnot. So I don't know what the courses look like, because I probably skipped over when looking at the ninth grader, the high school Program of Studies, but I can't imagine there is any on there.
So there are lots of agricultural courses, but the agricultural program has changed over time. One of the things that we did do this year, and that there are students enrolled for this year, is that there are students in Resource Management 2 who will get their Science 11 credit through Resource Management 2. That is happening this year. One of the reasons we are able to do that is because Mark is dual-certified in both agricultural, agriculture and science. The Vermont Agency of Education is not going to allow us to have a teacher who's not certified in science grade a student in science. Because Mark has that dual certification, we're able to do that.
So he could be the Ag, he is the Ag science. He could do the Ag science.
Yep.
Because he's been doing it, you know, and at one time, there was two. I think it was Kim's sister, it was the other one, there was, the both of them did it together.
That dual certification.
And so you could still do that Ag science. Mark could still do that Ag science, and it could still count.
Could. Mark is just one person, and we can't spread him out too thin. But he is doing that for next year for great...
But either that, or we're looking to hire in somebody, because, you know, we gotta get those freshmen involved over there, you know? If you've got a kid in eighth grade, it's got, starting goats, well, you wanna keep her going.
Absolutely.
You know, and some of these kids, that's what they look forward to, is that Ag building.
Absolutely, that's...
You know, and maybe there's a lot of opportunity over there.
Definitely, most definitely.
You know?
So also, we're going to take a look at the data from the standardized test to make sure that we are doing the right things in terms of our curriculum assessment and instructional practices. So I presented this information to the parents on Monday night, and some of the feedback that we received was that folks liked the flexible pathway for Science 11, they liked the Honors Prudential, they liked the idea of the feedback surveys from parents, teachers, and students, and the focus on instruction. Some of the pieces that they were still concerned about was that our actions don't necessarily address having to double up on science coursework, which causes scheduling conflicts, and that the changes didn't necessarily feel fast enough or go far enough for what they were bringing up as concerns.
Jen, can you go back a few slides where you talked about, right here, steps for 2018, 2019?
Yep.
Investigate the scheduling possibilities for accelerated pathways for CP electives?
Yep.
So are you now saying that that's an option for our incoming freshmen this year?
So I need to work with the people who make the schedule to see what the possibilities are for that. I can't answer that question right here.
Well, because on the handout that you gave us, it was 2019.
So, right, when we wrote this, we wrote it at the same time as we wrote the letter on the front. And in the amount of time between, which is probably a month or two, we started to talk about whether or not that could happen.
I just wanna make sure that it's not a typo. That's not something that's really happening, and it wasn't just an error in the plan.
And it's really dependent on what we can find in the schedule to make that happen.
Part of the conversation with Jim yesterday, we're aware of the possibilities of making that happen, and the frustration of schedules, and how we can leverage something to possibly make it happen.
I really like the idea that you have that option for flexibility in the Grade 11. I'd like, the next step is to see that flexibility in Grade 10 as well, because it seems like if kids take the Grade 9 science, do the Earth science and bio, and then immediately can go into a more traditional chemistry pathway, they'll set them up to do physics in the other semesters, and then allow those kids that flexibility to go to that next level and be challenged. I really like the idea of being flexible, and that might work for some of the, you know, kids that wanna be really challenged, the ones that wanna take a standard pathway, maybe the standard 9, 10, 11 science that is proposed now makes sense. Maybe there's some other option where, that some other type of flexibility could be used. I really like the idea of tailoring the learning so that absolutely meets the standard, at least meets the standard, I get that, but having the ability to modify that child's learning so it meets the standard and tailors them to the right learning. I like that idea.
Also, another question that I have is, so the standards are written into science for the 9, 10, 11. The principles are still Earth science, chemistry, biology, physics. Can't those standards be written into the straight-up courses?
Yep.
And you have two separate pathways, where you can either take the college prep pathway, where the standards are written into the curriculum for those courses, and skip the science 9, 10, 11, or you take the science 9, 10, 11 if you wanna go maybe on a business pathway, or some other pathway where you wouldn't be required to take those other courses.
So many schools kept their traditional course titles and wrote the standards into those course titles.
And then they have to somehow offer the curriculum to meet the standard to kids who aren't gonna be taking those courses, correct?
I think that's school-dependent. I think I've seen some schools that all students in Grades 9 and 10 are in the same science class, but it might have a more traditional title or a more traditional subject area. It's not necessarily separated out by students who are pursuing post-secondary college options. So I think it's, that's school-dependent, how different it is.
And you have to be careful not to get back to leveling, and between separating groups out, which doesn't seem to work as well. You think it does, you'd think it would, but pulling students together and challenging them together seems to work better. It's just harder instructional.
It is much harder instructional, and my Science Department's worked very hard on this curriculum and hasn't had time to really tackle the instructional piece. And I feel as though we are well-positioned right now to support them to tackle the instructional piece.
Thank you, Jen. Any questions, comments?
I'm, you know, I want more. I am concerned, I'm just concerned, you know, it came last year until it got pushed off the year, and, you know, some kids don't know what they wanna do, and they need the experience of trying a little bit of everything in high school, and some kids really know their direction. And the more I read the Program of Study, and, you know, talk about everybody having pathways, you know, the science 9, 10, 11 isn't really a pathway, it's a roadblock. And I understand they've been working on it, and I appreciate that, but there's, there's gotta be more flexibility for the kids that need it, and, you know, whether it's an Ag science program, or the college prep, or, you know, getting able to pass a college chemistry basic class, we need to do more. We want all these kids to be successful in college and in jobs. So I just want more. I'm concerned with, you know, there's a comment in there to survey parents and students. It needs to be a face-to-face meeting, and it needs to be almost monthly. People don't show up, there's no concerns, but, you know, we talked about, you know, when's the best time to actually meet the changes, because there's a budgeting, and then there's a scheduling change, and as a parent, you're coming in for this thinking, you know, my student is, is going to be leaving, you know, for college or work in a couple of years, and so they should be figuring this stuff out on their own. And the parents wanna step in to make sure, but they also wanna make sure the students do their own advocating. But I think we need to pull it back and have face-to-face with parents and students advocating what works and what doesn't work. My concern is two months down the road, it starts to slide down, and there's not something that we can, you know, pull this all back together, and then a year from now, there's a bunch of parents here. So, and I'm also concerned with transfer students in. They transfer in as a junior, they don't have science 9, 10, 11. Are you gonna make them take science 9 and 10 and 11, their junior year?
And we have, we have a bit of a sense of urgency here, because obviously, we're, you know, there's a large group of us here that have, that have incoming freshmen, that, so we're kind of operating in the 11th hour here, hoping to, hoping to, you know, change the world in a day or two. Yes, that's a tall task, you more than anybody knows. So obviously, we appreciate what you are doing. What, can, can you guys tell me what the percentage of graduates from MBU continue on to post-secondary?
This year, it was about 40%.
About 40%.
When I said at graduation, it was 110 graduates, and they said 33 will be going on to college. So, you know, that's not good. And I was actually shocked at that, and a lot of those kids are, it might be two-year schools, you know, and then they went through and said, come in here, do what you want. I was surprised at it.
So it seems like at that, at that level, obviously, it lends importance to what we're talking about with the flexible pathways, but it almost seems like that might make it a little bit more of a realistic goal, to be able to provide that pathway if you're at this time. Obviously, we want, we want 80% going, you know, that's, that would be, but the reality is, is that this is where we're at, so if we, if we tailor that now to that amount of students, maybe that makes it a little bit more of an attainable goal.
As I said earlier, the smaller the group, the harder it is, probably. You're gonna have less, less options, but I certainly appreciate you guys coming and your passion and enthusiasm for this subject, and a, looks like a room full of great people, board members here. I appreciate that. We're gonna get all your names and numbers.
Emails.
But, yeah, I appreciate the urgency, because we've got, we've got kids here, and that's, we can't, board members all have that same situation, but I think, I think the system's something we can work with. Is it gonna be fast enough? I don't know, but I know the teachers and the department head and the administration, they're all very concerned, and they're all, you know, they're all motivated to do the right thing, so I think that there's, there's potential for good outcomes here, and I, as long as everybody stays involved and keeps voicing their concerns, I think we're on the right track. Other than that, I don't know that we have much more, unless you have more comments for tonight, but I'm gonna save you for later, but...
I just want, I just wanna throw in, probably most of you don't know me, but I'm with the Ag committee. I've been fiddling with the school and the school flag, and there's a board that's been coming to meetings since October. I've been at everyone, sat maybe one. Back in October last year, like Richard's saying, we lost credits, we lost time in the classes, and we've lost space. So those are our main concerns that we've been fighting for. And back in October, I went and I asked for more time, which we are supposed to have for different reasons. The credits, I understand, because we don't have the teachers. We did have teachers, sadly, we could use teachers here and work a curriculum out with the Ag teachers and do the thing that way, but we do need to hire some teachers that are accredited, so we've been asking for that. So this is back in October last year, and what I was told after coming in is, well, well, now we, we can't get it into the 18, 19 schedule, because fuck, we've already set our schedule. And I tried back in October, and I was told, schedule's set, you're not getting your time, you're not getting this and that. They did give us the science credit, because Mark Wyatt was an accredited teacher. Wyatt was ever taken away because Mark was always accredited, so we should've never lost the science. But it did get lost. We were without it for three to four years, with credits over there, which students aren't gonna go over there, because they want their next to credits. You're gonna go and do these sciences and stuff over in the Ag, you know, the mechanics or whatever, you want your credits. They have these field studies, you can get four credits in field studies. They actually get a physical education credit, just because they walk around out in the See, everybody's grinning, because it's like, huh, oh, this is funny. It's really not funny, because it's kind of, the field studies are supposed to be for the trouble kids in the main curriculum. They used to send them to Ag, so they started field studies, so they, because they were disrupting the Ag. So then they started these field studies to put these kids into. Well, now we have kids that are leaving the Ag program, because they can go to the field studies and get these easy credits. So you can have all your high hopes and listen to all this, but good luck, because I've been fighting since October last year, and now we're looking at 19, 20, before we can get anything. And that's one of the reasons I keep coming, because there's no reason that we should have everything, even new teachers over there in the Ag, all our time, space, and the credits with new teachers if we need them by 19, 20, 19 and 20 season. And that's why I keep coming here, because my, my thing was always, we vote people in to do this stuff for us. This is their job. We vote these people in, through these boards, people are hired into the administration to do these jobs that we want done for our kids, and as parents and town people, and when they're not doing what we want, it's the same as the government, they don't do what we want, then we need to wipe this whole board out and put in a whole new board, which you can do when you reelect people. So if you've got people sitting here that aren't doing what you need to do, you need to get them out. Yes, it's not gonna work for you, because your kid's coming freshman, you fiddle around for two, three years, guess what? Your kid's not gonna get it, because they're not gonna get it. My, what I don't understand is you say, well, you have these standards for 9, 10, 11 science. Well, aren't these advanced classes meeting these standards? So why can't the advanced classes take the place of these standards, just like you were saying? So why stick them into this and make their schedule harder to get these classes, when these classes are above the standards that you set? So why can't they take it? I sit here and I listen, usually I'm quiet, Dennis.
Usually.
And I listen, and I'm just giving out information that I've been dealing with since October last year, even before, because I've been involved with the Ag, back when my kids were here, and my kids ain't been since six or eight years. I mean, I've worked in the barn over there, I've worked in the building, and helped so these kids can have stuff. So, I mean, here we are, July, coming into August, and we're starting a school year in two months. So they say all this good stuff, but, I mean, you really gotta really push it. I mean, maybe we need more administration, maybe we need teachers in the meeting, so we can find out what they can do. And I've been fighting with this Ag, like I say, for almost a year. Well, I'm going, but a year trying to get what we lost three, four years ago. And it better be in the 19, 20 schedule, and we better have new teachers accredited over there to cover math, science, and English, if you can get it. I'm not exactly sure, there's a whole list of things, because there's a book that this thick that they have to follow for Ag science, Agriculture and... thick that they have to follow for Ag science, the agricultural.
I can tell you something, gentlemen. You're a high-heat boy and in March, you can have the seat.
See? I am one of them people that sit here and, oh yeah, we can do this, we can, oh, that's a good guy, let's vote him in. Because for one, I don't have the time and I've been taking my time for the last ten months, a year. But I expect the people that say, oh, I can do this and I can do that, and I expect it from them. And because I'm not getting it, here I am. And because these people aren't getting what they want, here they are. But like you say, we're in the final hour.
Pretty hard, gentlemen, pretty hard. I've been sitting here, you know what? You're gonna find out, you sit here, you're only one person. You're only one person.
You can be that one person, but I'm speaking for a whole group, just like this one gentleman is speaking for a whole group. He's looking out for people behind him. Just because them fifteen people that he knows couldn't be here tonight, so he's here for them fifteen. So, each one of these could be representing twenty people. Just because you ain't got sixty people here don't mean there isn't sixty people that care.
And our goal is to represent all the people as well, so it may not always seem that way, but that's...
Well, we can only represent what we know.
The small, the small...
I'd like to say something real quick.
Because you guys can, I sit in these school board meetings and you guys have never, never answered a person's correct, uh, answer to the, to the knowledge that they want because you do this. And you go around it and I see it all the time.
I'd like to say something, we can only represent what we know. In the past, nine times out of ten, I come to the board meeting and I find out this stuff.
I know, and I, and like I said, I...
And I tell you, it's, it's, there's been a lack of transparency for a long time.
I've seen...
Okay, so Julie is a breath of fresh air, she has an opportunity to change these things, okay? These are the problems that've been in the past. And this is one of the reasons why I got interested in getting involved, okay? Is because nobody knows anything, especially this board. We can't represent what we don't know. And I'm finding out from, you know, from my community members, these things that I should be aware of, I don't know anything about it. So...
Administration and supervisor...
Jim, you're exactly right.
Superintendent have been running this school and they have not been listening to the board or the community. So, there's where your changes need to be. The administration works for the town. Yes, they have government and state requirements, but they're in place and they are working for our town, for our kids, and they're paid by our town. So the transparency needs to stop, everybody needs to know. If there's a question, you need to ask and we need to find out. And in the technology that we have today, I've seen at meetings and somebody has asked a question, oh, well, I don't have that information and I think that's BS because everything is on a computer nowadays. There's no reason somebody couldn't pull up a file and answer that person's question without saying, why don't I have that information that tonight? I'm sorry, Dennis, but I'm done.
That's all right, but, but I'm gonna try to change the subject and I appreciate your passion, like I said earlier.
I think we have another question here before you finish up.
Oh, okay.
Well, I just wanted to say that I, the board is in a tough spot and because they don't always have all the information. And as parents, we put our faith in the school that our kids are gonna get what they need. And then when you find out, whoa, there's this big gap here, why is my child not gonna get what I think is appropriate? So then we start talking, here we are, and this is what we're doing. And unfortunately, it takes time to make it happen, but I would expect that the board can take this seriously and move quickly on making improvements. Because it's not just the kid, it's all of these kids. And it's not just the accelerated kids, every kid deserves to be talked to. And there should be a pathway, an Ag pathway, a science pathway, you know, all, every kid should have an avenue to get what they need. And that's why we're here. And I did run against Eric, he won, so...
So I think, one more, couple of comments for me, just to make sure the board knows my concern. You know, I, I think in practice, I think in theory, this integrated curriculum approach makes sense, right? You integrate things, you make sure you teach to the curriculum, make sure that people have that, that minimum knowledge. But in practice, I think that it limits what options are available for somebody that wants to, you know, look at an Ag program or somebody that wants to be a, a science major. They're limited to what is required on this curriculum. Doesn't allow the flexibility, there's not a lot of slots in the schedule, scheduling is difficult, we all kind of acknowledge that. You know, it's really written for that minimum and not the ability to challenge those folks too. So, I think it's critical that, I think what we're trying to say is, let's, let's look at that and if, and if we can still hit the minimum requirement some other way, let's be open-minded to that, give these kids that challenge that they all really want and...
I appreciate that very much.
I just have concerns with the Excel programs for science. You're putting it down to one semester and those who wanna be majoring in science, you're almost rushing their education to be only one semester long. We're going into a college and these other classmates from different locations have these educations based out of science and we're getting less of it. Really, they're just rushing the material through one semester rather than a whole year. Because really, think about it, going from, I went to, I graduated four years ago, I went to a year, I did CP Bio, and then I did Anatomy and Physiology, I did AP Science classes, and I still look well-prepared. So I just want you guys to be like aware of not rushing things, make sure they're well-prepared, but not dumb it down for everyone, because we are trying to push ourselves. I'd rather be pushed at a younger age than to get older and have to push myself through college because I felt like I didn't have that education.
Thank you very much.
That, that was another comment that I wanted to make at the last board meeting that I was at, is that this next-gen science program starts at K. It's a K through 12 program and you're taking students who have not had K through ninth grade of this next-gen curriculum where it spirals up. So, I'll just start at K and then move forward from there. I didn't say that last time, but I was thinking it in the back of my head.
I don't have that answer. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys being here.
Dennis, when did we go away from, and why?
Kind of Ag science specifically or the whole science curriculum?
The whole, in ninth grade, you did earth science, you either did regular or college prep, and then you had to have three or four science credits credit, you took what you wanted, you either took chemistry?
Yeah.
What, what happened? What was so wrong with that that we had to go to this?
Was it just five years ago? Do you think?
So, it was probably about four or five years ago.
No, it was...
Three, when it started.
Three years ago.
I had graduated with fifteen, worked at Great Lakes.
Yep, so the, so the next-generation science standards, which were adopted by the state, were adopted about five or six years ago. Um, the decision that the department made to go in the direction that they did, um, was made at that point, they presented to the board at that point. Um, the actual implementation of the curriculum has only been over the past three years. So this is the, the first year that 11th graders experienced science 11. They would've been writing curriculum for three years. Um, at the time that the science department made the decision to go forward with the new curriculum, they went forward with what the authors of the standards recommended as the integrated model. And I think they believed that lots of other people were going to go in that same direction and most high schools around us did not. And so, I, that's where we are, based on those decisions made at that point.
Maybe it's time we go back to the old ways.
Yes.
There's, there's thoughts of that, for sure.
Because I've got, I've got two kids in school, one's got a 4.0, one's got a 2.0. He belongs in the Ag department and she belongs in, it's that simple. It's not fit for everybody.
Well, I think the administration has heard it, so, uh, the board has heard it. So I think that we're, not that I wanna rush the conversation, but I think we've had a great conversation and I think that we will move along to the next segment of business, otherwise it may be a while.
Before they leave though, I'd like to ask them, stay in contact with your school board member and keep them informed, because it's awful hard to, to come in here and call turkey and, and gotta suddenly catch up with all this information that you've been following for a while. I've had three phone calls from my constituents, two or more about football five years ago, and one was about a bid contract. That's it. And I've been on the board for about ten years. Three phone calls from constituents. Now, how can I, how do you expect me to make informed decisions if you don't stay and keep me informed? I would welcome your calls. I may not always agree with you, but I would certainly welcome your calls.
So, maybe I don't understand how this works, but does the board actually have the capacity and the authority to say, okay, we're gonna change this curriculum?
You know, none of us are professional educators, so...
I was.
Well, okay.
I was just a high school principal, so...
As, as a rule, we're not professional. Right, so, I guess I should've thought about that one. But, some of us just aren't very bright. Um, but, I guess, where would I go with that now? That's why, that's why we hire our administrators and our superintendent is to kind of guide us in the right direction. And it's our job to approve things like that, but, uh, we lean heavily on our administration to, to make the right recommendations and, uh, so that's...
And that's, that's what I was saying, is as a parent, as a parent in college, we put our faith in the school in that they're gonna provide, because I'm not an educator, you know?
Right.
And that they're gonna provide what our child needs to go out and be a productive, uh, member of society. And I think that meeting the standards is great, but I think we should ask for more than meeting the standards.
And I think that's what our instructional practices are, instructional part of the big picture is, they're gonna be working on that harder now. So, that, I'm assuming is gonna make a difference, but that's probably not the only thing.
And Mr. Jarvis, I, I thoroughly appreciate your sentiment, I do. I think it speaks loudly to the concern that, that Mr. Borger brought up earlier.
Absolutely.
That in, in my mind, um, I would love if my school board members would contact me and let me know where my concern is at. Instead of, you see, you see, you see what I mean?
We have, we have several thousand constituents, we can't make phone calls.
No, I understand, I understand, I understand.
It's a lot easier for you to contact me, if you have a point of interest, you contact me and we can discuss whatever I happen to know about it.
Absolutely.
And what you know about it. And if you have an agenda or, or leaning towards some particular action, at least we can discuss it. I may not always agree with you.
Sure.
But you're gonna know why I don't agree with you if, if, if we have this discussion. And that's what I look for. I would really appreciate, and now my phone's gonna...
I appreciate the invitation. I think the board can expect some correspondence from me at least.
But we set policy, we don't, we, we leave it to the administrators to carry out our policy. We set a policy and the mechanics of it is up to the administration. And, uh, it's nice to have, have some input as to what policies would be useful.
And the last thing a board wants to do is micromanage, but if we realize that our constituents, our, our parents and, and young people are interested in a particular direction, then we can help, we can help guide that through, um, through the leadership and through the superintendent's office and through the administration. But we, 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 we set the policy, we don't micromanage.
That's right.
The administration.
We'd be very reluctant if we tried to micromanage.
Something else, Andrew wants to say, habits of work.
Oh, no. Habits of work. Uh, now maybe, maybe the website needs to be updated, I don't know. But I was reading through, I was reading through the, the high school habits of work as my, my daughter gets us to, she's supposed to join the high school ranks, which she lets me know on a regular basis, by the way, Dad, I'm a ninth grader now. So, anyways. There's a grading syllabus, I guess is what I would call it, that denotes A, A-, and B+ but then there's, but then there's the proficiency base, which is one, two, three, four. And what I read and was concerned about was that habits of work makes up twenty percent of what my daughter's final yearly grade is gonna be, twenty percent. Now, when I read what it takes to get that four, which in, in my mind, and what it looks like on, on the website and in the syllabus, would, would equate to an A, is that she needs to be responsible for others' learning. And she needs to be held accountable for basically other kids paying attention and, engaging in class. And that goes against what I teach my kids. And maybe I'm a bad parent. I teach my kids that they need to be responsible for themselves. When my, when my son says, but Dad, you let sister do all, well, you know what? You worry about you. And so, that goes, that really goes against that and especially if it concerns me when it's twenty percent of their final grade. And it's, and it's a subjective evaluation. There's no, there's no, okay, A, B, C, D, A is right, B is wrong. It's a subjective evaluation. And so that's important. So I don't know where we go with that.
Right, I don't, I don't know much about that part of it.
Neither does the board.
Well, maybe the board should look at your high school and your ninth grade program of studies and look at what's in there, because there's been at least three things now that have come up out of there that we discussed tonight that maybe you guys aren't really aware of, or just read through it, it's interesting. It's good reading.
I'd be happy to answer that after, if you wanna give me a call.
I would love to, it'd be great. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move along. Brings us to the fun stuff, finance report. Where do we start with that? Laura, your name is right up there.
I put your name right on top. But the first couple of items are actually Becky, so I'll pick up.
So I just wanted to finish up some of the things we were working on over seventeen, eighteen, um, year. The bond bank has said, uh, we now have access to loan proceeds to fund some of the projects. So it's on reimbursement basis, so we would pay the bills and then submit a requisition to be reimbursed. So one thing I need tonight is have the board, um, appoint an authorized representative to act on, or could be multiple, like both Laura and myself and Ann and Julie, three people who can act on behalf of the board to go through that requisition process and then just do the logistical work that needs to get done, the, the financial aspects of the bond I sponsored.
So we, I would entertain a motion then to authorize, I guess the three of you, if you're all comfortable with that, the superintendent and the, are you still co-business manager or...
Business manager, finance...
Business manager and Becky. Uh, authorize the three of them to, to, um, manage or, what's the wording?
Well, to act on behalf of...
Act on behalf of MBU.
Yep, in matters relating to the bond bank loan.
Perfect, just like that.
I would ask the board chair to sign this, this form that I sent in, so I'll authorize you to sign that.
authorize the board chair to sign for that. All right, uh, do I have that motion?
I'm ready.
Motion by Greg, who is the second.
Second.
Second, Rob. Discussion. All right, you're one.
Just to be clear, what exactly was this again?
I'm sorry?
I, I missed something in your discussion, in your explanation of what it is that we're...
Agreed or...
Yes.
Okay, so the bond, we, we have access now to our bond prostates because our bonds have been sold. So we have some projects that have been... have been sold, and so we have some projects that have been started. I'm not sure if we've actually paid for them yet, but.
We haven't paid for any bond issues yet, but they're, they're coming soon.
So this is projects, various projects will be going on all through this coming year. So when the school expends that money, then I have to go to the bond bank agent and get reimbursement, so that the money comes back. So that, that's how, how three of us would be acting on behalf of the board.
And we have, we have to approve, we don't want you to do that.
Correct, yeah, you have to appoint someone to act to that on behalf.
So we're appointing the three of them to be responsible for that and then authorize them, the board chair, to sign the document that says that they're the three responsible for that. Any other questions? You're none, all in favor of that motion, signify by the same eye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries.
In terms of the driver ed, this is the second driver ed vehicle that we had an article that was approved at town meeting. At the last meeting, the board looked at pricing on the vehicle as well as the borrowing from local banks. We did have a motion at the last meeting to award the borrowing to People's Trust, so I have the loan agreements that just need to have the board to sign. And we had also discussed, we had four, well, we had pre-cots from dealerships and we had a fourth one that came in at the last minute that we needed to do some clarification on. That fourth one has fallen through. So we authorized the board chair and the business office to go with the lowest bidder. So that would be Barretts and Swanton. So I have a fax copy of the sale agreement, but there'll be originals, so if you would authorize the board chair to sign those, I will get that paperwork to him and then we can get that car purchased and appear to be used.
Now, did we, remember if we had made the motion and we authorized the board chair and the?
We were, we were, the board chair and business office were authorized, I believe, to award it.
Right.
To the lowest bidder.
Right.
With emphasis on local dealerships.
Yes, actual.
Toward what our two lowest bidders were. So with Barretts as the one.
Okay, so, so now the motion will be just to have the board chair sign, or.
Correct.
Does the whole board, all board signs the?
No, I would need you to be authorized, the board chair, to sign any of the purchase documentation.
Okay, perfect. Well, I guess I would entertain that motion, authorize the board chair to sign loan documentation for the driver ed car.
Who made that motion?
From Barretts. Motion by Eric.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mark. Any discussion? You're none, all in favor of the motion, signify by the same eye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries.
I did send out a copy of the financial report, it's still a draft, there's still some expenses out there to be made that the board approved last month. Things that were going to come out of capital reserve and we, there was some money left in the budget to be expended. So the figure that is in that summary will probably be reduced by about $60,000, but it's still, that'll carry over, go into FY20. That's what that's worth, yeah. So it's just informational. That's pretty much it for me, except for check ones and maybe others.
We do, we do, I guess we can go right into those.
Can we have driver education, uh, no, the paid, you know, lunch pricing?
Yeah. I think that's the last thing.
Yep.
Well, we can go down through the list, let's go through the lunch pricing thing.
Um, first I just wanted to remind the board that you do work with a food service management company, who is the Abbey. That's only ever allowed to be a one-year contract, which I believe the last meeting was approved for a renewal. I think you're in, going into your second year of a possible four year, of four renewals. So Dennis has signed that. The management fee and the admin fee, we're supposed to have an increase of 2.2%, it was allowed up to 2.5%, but actually due to a typo, you're going to see you would not have an increase, because we caught the typo, so you're not, so your admin and management fee are only going to remain at $10,000 a piece. So that was nice, I want to let you know about that. When you have a food service management company, the board still has the authority to set your paid lunch price for students. Breakfast will remain free, if that's the wish of the board, but that program is very, very successful and that actually has helped to aid with behavior issues that are happening at MBU, just feeding kids and making sure that everyone is not hungry in the morning has actually aided in lots of areas, and that's one of them. Lunch, where after we completed the required paid lunch equity tool, which is a calculation that the state requires so that we meet a certain level of paid meal pricing, which is the Vermont target rate, which for fiscal year 19 is $2.92. We complete the tool, we're asking that the board approve or consider approving an increase to the hot lunch price of 10 cents, so it would go from $2.75 to $2.85. It meets the requirement, but it also hopefully won't discourage participation in the program because that's how you get a successful program, so we're trying to do it incrementally. So that's, that's for board consideration.
Laura.
Yeah?
I ask this every time.
I know you do.
Um, but what's, what's our standing point for our district on, on the free hot lunches, like in Richmond and that stuff? Where, where, where do we stand?
With offering free meals to everyone?
Yeah, free meals to everyone.
The community eligibility provision, we monitor that every year, often many times throughout the year.
Because I asked last year.
Yeah.
And it said, somebody told me, we were getting closer and closer.
We're actually not getting closer and closer.
Okay.
It's not your free and reduced priced hot lunch percentage, it's your identified student percentage, so it's your direct cert, so it's students who are families, students who live in households that receive four squares, I'm going to use the wrong terminology, but subsidy from the state for, for food and other services. That percentage is not as high as it is for that, for free and reduced priced hot lunch. So our free and reduced priced hot lunch percentage at MBU is just around 50%, but your identified direct cert student percentage is only around 25. To cash flow a program, it needs to be around 40. So we are, I'm, I would love to offer everyone free meals, once you belong to the community eligibility provision, you keep that qualification for five years. So we're, we're continuing to monitor it, but actually if anything, our free and reduced price percentages have dropped a little bit, and so have our identified or direct certification percentages a little bit. But we, I'm on it, I'm watching it, the state is watching it, the Abbey, actually, your food service management company is also watching it because they would love to feed kids. I think it's a great step in the right direction, offering the free breakfast to everyone. But I am on it, Richard, I have not forgotten.
Okay.
Um, but I will tell you that our participation of students in hot lunch, since we've made the change to a food service management company, has gone from 11% of kids eating meals at school to like 65% of kids eating schools meals. That's just changing the offerings, making sure the price is set correctly, listening to student concerns, holding meal advisory meetings. So I feel like we're headed in a good direction. If anybody ever has any recommendations, I encourage any community members, kids, parents, grandparents, teachers, anyone to come to those meal advisory meetings or reach out to the supervisory union, because we are one school food authority, so all of our schools technically are monitored at, at the SU level, and I will.
Has anybody looked at what the participation increase has been since we added the new food cart?
I have not.
Because there was a lot of discussion around adding that because there wasn't enough time, the long, the lines were too long.
The lines were too long.
The, the lunch was, you know, there wasn't either, it was to give them another option to kind of split the lines up.
Right. I think that had more to do, if I remember correctly, more to do with the amount of time students had to eat after working their way through the line, I think, right Paul?
And I can speak to that a little bit. It does work better because there's actually two lines flowing where there's two people making sandwiches at the same time, so it, it has doubled the process over there, so kids have more time to eat that way.
More time to eat, because I think the, the window of what's the time?
21 minutes.
I think it's around 20 minutes or something like that.
Including the service time.
So, right, so they don't have a long time to get their food and to eat.
It used to be late twice in that time.
Yeah?
Yeah. All right, so you'd like a motion to approve that increase in lunch?
2.75 to 2.85 for FY19.
And have the breakfast remain free.
Breakfast remain free and the lunch price go up by 10 cents.
So what is it for adults? Does anybody know?
Adults worth $4 at MBU. The state of Vermont also monitors those rates and makes sure that your, the state subsidies are not subsidizing.
Adults.
The adult meals. And so the adult lunch target price is 3.70. We offer quite a lot of options, so at MBU it's set at $4. Again, all of these can be set by the board, so if the board is concerned about that. And honestly, I didn't think to ask about the percentage of teachers that are eating lunch here or staff that's eating lunch here, but I could find out.
So it's basically $80 a month if you ate a lunch every day as a teacher?
All right, well, let's start with the motion for free breakfast, an increase of 10 cents to 2.85 for lunches. And I guess we're going to talk about the adult prices of this.
I don't need a motion for the adult prices, but I'm happy to look, get, look into it more.
Let's start looking for, for a motion.
So, so is this a state set anyway, even if we've folded it down, it's still going to be 2.85?
The state's number was 2.92.
Well, that's their target, so the way it works, Richard, is, is the same way in Highgate. If you choose not to meet the paid lunch equity calculation, then you need to understand that the board can set it at a dollar, you can set it at $2, but your program has to cash flow as a requirement of the state, so you may find yourself in a situation where you would need to subsidize with other funds, funds from another source. Some schools do that.
We could offer free.
Would not be my recommendation.
We could offer free lunches to everyone who wants to pay for it.
You could, if you want to pay for it, you could, yes.
So, so in our best interest?
I think they're coming, I think the administration again, coming in with a pretty good recommendation.
When was the last increase?
Every year, so we've been working towards that target of 2.92 with the calculation. Actually, though, we dropped a price when, and I have a whole history here if you'd like to see it, but you were at $2.60 in fiscal year 14, that was an in-house program. In fiscal year 15, the program was struggling with all the new meal requirements and the federal meal requirements, and the price jumped to $3. We kept that for two years, the program was still struggling, moved to a food service management company, we were able to actually convince the state to drop the price 25 cents. So we went down to 2.75. So since then, they've allowed us to take some of that credit where we were higher for awhile and apply it year by year. So we're still below where we were four years ago, but we have to incrementally get back up. If that makes sense.
All right, so I'm still waiting for that motion.
I'll move it.
Motion by, seconded by Greg. Any further discussion? You're one.
Discuss.
Yeah, yeah. You're none, all in favor of the motion, signify by the same eye.
Aye.
Guys have it, motion carries. That means Laura explained it very well, we didn't have to discuss it after.
I'm really happy with the program right now, so I get a little excited.
Well, it sounds like it's working, so, I like that.
Um, and so the Chromebook lease, so a little bit of education, because I educated myself around this today because I'm unfamiliar with MBU, but you're currently engaged in two different Chromebook leases at MBU. One was initiated in fiscal year 17 for 436 Chromebooks, another one was initiated last year for another 185 Chromebooks. And Sylvia and your tech team here have requested that we initiate another Chromebook lease for 160 Chromebooks so that we can complete these cycles. The total of the lease that I'm looking at, right, that they've asked me to bring to you tonight is $50,240 for, as I said, 160 Chromebooks. Annual payment based on lease rates that I've solicited and Sylvia has solicited would be about 17.5, about 17,500. I received rates from several different companies, one of which is Vermont Municipal Leasing, who also then gathers lots and lots of rates on their own, incorporates with the best bid. It would be my recommendation that the board approve awarding the lease to Vermont Municipal Leasing at 4.97%. Lease rates have gone up a little bit, but not too much over the last couple of years. The other rates received were from HP Solution, which is 7.94% for three-year loan with a $1 payoff, a three-year lease, I'm sorry, with a $1 payoff at the end, and American Capital was 6.26. So even though Vermont Municipal Leasing charges a document fee and the others do not over the course of the loan, it's actually more economical to go with Vermont Municipal Leasing. So that would be my recommendation.
Is there any other benefits other than just the price?
Um, this is just the lease I'm talking about, so the units themselves, is that what you mean, the Chromebook? Or do you mean the lease?
No, the cost of the lease.
Okay, um, I do a lot, I tend to gravitate towards municipal leasing because they are on top of things, they process very, very quickly. I like the relationships they have with their banks. And they actually will allow us to move forward with the purchase as soon as tomorrow if the board approves and time is of the essence because Chromebooks are in high demand, and we can process the lease over the next 60, 90 days and it won't hold up the purchase. Whereas some of the other companies, we can't do that. So, it's a kind of a win-win.
Plus the price is good, so, the rates are good.
Yeah. So I would, if the board would consider a motion to approve awarding the lease to Vermont Municipal Leasing in the amount of $50,240, we can move forward with that purchase.
Perfect. I'll entertain that motion. Motion by Eric.
Who'll second it?
Seconded by Richard. Further discussion?
Are these to replace the old ones?
Um, it's part of the replacement cycle, so, yeah, so we're engaged in three leases right now, this will be, this will be the third actually, so they started this cycle, well, the new cycle I should say, in fiscal year 17, there was 436 units bought and leased for three years. Last year there was 185 and then there's 160 again this year. So total, there would be 781 devices.
But is there an expansion further down in grades, or is this just covering?
I don't believe so, I think these are replacing.
This is for the incoming seventh graders, I believe. So, it's seven through 12.
What'd you say, just for seventh graders?
No, so the, the lease would cover the incoming seventh graders.
Oh, okay.
And they keep those rather?
I think it's a three, three or four years, I don't think they keep them for six, I think they would not be supportable at a certain point.
Yeah, I was talking to the Highgate tech individual, say, about the same kind of a purchase, he was saying they seem like they may last up to five years now, which would be great if we could get two years off of the lease payment.
Yeah.
In the cycle, whereas it used to be four, so you have one year off.
Yeah.
Do they take them home here, or are they going to stay here?
So, we, we have created procedures for them to stay in the building so that they charge. Oddly, the chargers are very expensive compared to the cost of the Chromebook, and so having enough chargers for students to take chargers home and have chargers at school is cost prohibitive. So they, there, these carts over here, near you, there's a cart like that in each TSA or homeroom where a student starts their day, and they're supposed to plug in their device before they leave.
All right, so this cart's plugged in, is that?
So I know that our tech team is kind of cycling through these right now and updating them and cleaning them up, getting them ready for the starting year.
So that is what's in there?
Yep, yeah, and there are a couple different models of carts, I think, because of how we purchased them over time. We used some carts that we had in the building existing, because we had a number of mobile labs, and then we purchased other carts when we started the program.
Because when we purchased the tan ones, they were more towards laptops, now we're using Chromebooks so that they're actually lighter weight and they're to charge.
Want of those around, around hallway?
And the lease isn't, I mean, there's no benefit to the lease as far as like if there's issues or if they, it's just literally a financing thing?
The lease is completely separate from the, but I believe part of what they're purchasing is like a maintenance, preventative maintenance and software support agreement as well as the Chromebook.
Also, I'm wondering, because Chromebooks aren't that much, I mean.
No.
It's usually up to like $300 per one.
This is like $314, but if you want to see the breakdown of the quote.
You buy in a service contract too.
Um, right, so you're buying a Chromebook for 2.89, but then there's a, this is one example, but, and then the management console license and everything that comes with that, the support is another $25 per unit.
I, I guess my point is, unless there's some leasing and just buying them, because after five years, they're probably tossed away anyways, and that's probably what they do, they just take them, do they even take these back?
We keep them.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, so.
The seniors left with theirs.
But I'm just curious, I mean, what's the, if we, if we were just to buy them, what's the difference?
The price to purchase would be the same as it is to lease?
Right.
I asked that question.
Taking out a loan for a full.
What I would like to do is be able to actually borrow the money, because the interest rates are much more attractive on a borrowing, but you need prior voter approval for that, whereas right now the board can make a decision. but you need prior voter approval for that, whereas right now the board can make a decision with the non-appropriation clause in the lease. So if we can start to plan ahead a little bit more with our cycles, now that we know Chromebooks are what we want and what the cycle needs to be, if we do a borrowing, we can probably save some money, or buy them outright, you're right, not pay the interest.
All right, well, that's why I wasn't sure if there's some benefit to it, if they're maintaining them.
I guess that was my question then.
Oh, sorry, I misunderstood you.
That's okay.
So I think I heard what you said, I thought, I heard you say that they do help maintain them.
The company you're purchasing from does, the leasing company does not do that. The leasing company is purely a way of financing the options. Because, oh, you know, I mean, the first purchase we made for four hundred and thirty-six was a hundred and nine thousand dollars, so that was to start the huge process. While its maintaining isn't as expensive, the first purchase is.
All right, I forget now, I think we had a motion on the floor. Did we make the motion? All right, any further discussion? Great discussion, thank you.
I guess my only comment is if we know we're going to be doing this consistently, we should probably just give the budget and not worry about in the future.
Right, right, no, I think for, for next year, I mean, for this year, I think this is the way we have to do it.
So you have a fifty thousand dollar line item one year, rather than for the next three years, a seventeen thousand dollar line item, this is kind of what you'd be looking at.
Think we need to jot that down now.
All right. All right, back to the motion. Was there any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. And we'll consider something different next year. Check warrants. I'm waiting, I'll make the case. Such a pile of them. All right, I'm going to start from the top of the pile and work my way through it. An entertaining motion to approve check warrants for the dates June nineteenth to June twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-four thousand, ninety dollars and sixty-one cents. Do I have that motion? Motion by John, do I have a second?
Those were the ones that were emailed out.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, these are way back. You can second it anyways, Greg, and then we'll, we'll fire them.
Did anybody second it?
They're looking for a second. Richard seconded, there you go. So, yeah, we got these, uh, it must have been early July. Are there any questions on that one? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. I think what I'll do is I'll circulate them all together, so. I would entertain a motion to approve check warrants for the dates June twenty-seventh to June twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-seven cents. Way out of that motion.
I'll move that one.
Motion by Rob, do I have a second? Second by Mark.
Is that one of those that were mailed to us, too?
This was, yeah, this was, oh, a while back, yeah.
I need the one, I got a question, but that ain't the one with the, with the sport, with the pants and the shorts and all that on it.
I, you know, I have to, I think it is.
Do you have a check number, Richard?
Um, yep. It's, um, would that be invoice, you want? Two, five, eight, three, six, five, is that what you want there?
No, the very, the very first column, I think, has a check number.
Five, seven, four, eight, nine?
Four, nine, exactly.
There's Adidas, I wondered, I wondered what, what they are, what, what uniforms.
Yeah, it's page seven.
Yes, the bottom, turn from the bottom.
It's right after the, uh, top of your lease payment.
Sounds like you're in FY nineteen.
Page seven.
Page seven.
Page seven of the, uh, June twenty-seventh to June twenty-ninth. Adidas Royal Stock Shirts, uh, baskets, if they're going.
A lot of money in them, I know that.
Yeah.
Thirty-four, you're talking almost forty, forty-two hundred dollars worth of uniforms?
Almost five thousand.
Page seven?
What?
Yeah.
Nearly five thousand.
Five thousand. Turn the page.
Forty-nine, okay, I missed something. On the top, too?
No, the back of the page that you were looking at. Nope, you didn't get it. Okay, now turn it over.
The softball jerseys there.
Yeah, it says softball.
That was, this one is not really defined.
Oh, yeah.
Royal Stock Shirts. Nine forty-four.
Administration told.
Is this for soccer?
Softball?
That's softball.
It says softball.
It looks like, uh.
The boys don't play softball.
Jerseys, men's jerseys.
Yeah, we've got, uh, quantity forty-eight, we've got jerseys. Yeah, it looks like upgrades, like decoration, uh, colors.
On the other thing, you said middle school, but this page here doesn't say what it.
Make sure I have the D in the amount. I'm happy to gather that, I am going to shoot you an email first thing in the morning to everyone if you'd like.
You, you know where it is, though, did you see it here?
Yeah.
Soccer stuff, Richard.
Oh, it's softer?
The first three might be soccer.
The last one's softball.
The last one says softball.
Is it, it's all the same check, isn't it?
Yep.
It's all soccer.
Little school softball jerseys.
Yeah, but the last one says softball.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's going to be going to softball games.
Oh, maybe the twenty-four.
Well, this is four.
Yeah, okay, so. There's forty-eight soccer jerseys, twenty-four softball.
Okay. All right, that answer your question?
Yep.
Well, I guess we just won't over that.
I think it's more likely that John's doing his ordering right now, because he has time to do it.
All right, uh, so the motion is out there, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. I would entertain a motion, you know, stick with me now, everybody. Entertained a motion to approve check warrants from June thirty to June thirty, in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and three dollars and sixty-two cents. Do I have that motion? That was one good day.
I'll make the one.
Motion by Greg, do I have a second? Second by Eric. Any discussions on that one? Four, four, oh, okay. Just checking up on me. All right, hearing no further discussion, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. I would entertain a motion to approve check warrants for July one to July one, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Do I have that motion? Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Richard, do I get a second?
I don't have July one. I get July.
Second by John. You'll refresh your memory quickly, I can imagine it's very short.
Yeah, that was emailed out at which point.
I get this, this one.
Can I see it? It's very short. You didn't keep it. You're right, having it there.
Christmas best.
Yeah. You can't retard it. All right. No further discussion, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. And the last one, an entertaining motion to approve check warrants for the dates July second to July twentieth, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of two hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and ten cents.
What's, what's State Kids?
State Kids is an organization that we're working with around training faculty members in, uh, like behavior de-escalation techniques, like calming kids down and talking to kids to help solve behavior issues.
I was more concerned with the brain pop, but.
I saw that, too.
Yeah, I thought that was a fun term.
And, and while we're right there on that page, what's, uh, I, I know what the VPA is, but what's the NASSP?
National Associations. Secondary School Principals?
Secondary.
School?
Oh. I thought it was school psychologists.
No, this one's secondary school principals.
Secondary school principals, okay. I'm used to the other.
So it's like the professional organization that Jay and Dan belong to.
Well, well, yeah, but I got VPA, one of whom is, uh.
One's Vermont, one's national.
Okay, so, so only one of whom is, uh, both of them are VPA, but the, the national, there's only one? I don't see.
I just have to look over Dennis's shoulder for a second. So the VPA is the Vermont.
Oh, okay, Principal's.
Yes, the Vermont Principals Association. Are you on page three? Is that where you are? Okay, so that, this is dues and membership. And then, uh, VPA might handle the billing for the National School Principals Association membership. I would have to check on that, I'm not exactly sure. Right, so the, your, the vendor is the VPA, but you're noticing that the description says National Association of Schools. Yeah, I don't know exactly why, but it could be that the VPA pays the National Association, if we can check on that.
The VSADA?
Okay, thank you.
I don't know that one off the top of my head.
Something to do with industry aspects, so. I can look at that one. VSADA?
You have the technology, right?
Vermont State Athletic Directors Association.
So that's for John, that's his professional organization.
Who falls under that one?
One of them's environmental, what's that?
Yeah, we were just wondering, I was asking that one.
Wait, I'll have to look that one up, too.
What was it?
Um, it's check five, seven, five, two, one.
John?
What are you questioning?
Just wondering what was for.
Oh.
Which department, maybe?
That for a permit, like thousand dollars.
Forty.
Is that a permit to do the digging?
No, it's, what it is, is we've been five years into our watershed, so we had to reapply for our stormwater permit with your boiler.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, that's one of mine. Instead of environmental, it just kind of dawned on me.
Yeah, that's, it had to be your area. All right, uh, what would we be advertising in seven days?
We were having trouble filling our Spanish position, we posted multiple times, we had three rounds of interviews, and so we tried a different avenue, we had an advertisement in seven days.
Did it work?
We have done that position, yes.
We've had to use that publication in, in our environment, too, for administrative positions, and had a lot more success with that than we did with others, too.
All right, any further comments, questions? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. All right, let's start around this one, John can start. Ready to get them all? All right. I think that's the end of that, unless either of you have.
We haven't seconded, she hasn't. I just heard.
Did I have a second?
I just heard, we went over it, then it was.
And I didn't write it down.
Motion carries.
Maybe we never had one.
We got that part.
Uh, who was the one before that previous visit?
Before was Richard and John.
Okay, I think we had Greg and, uh, John and Eric.
Eric seconded.
Eric seconded, but Greg, did you make that last motion, was it you, John?
I think you.
Oh, there you go.
I was trying not to, to, to motion anything like that so many times, I thought you told Greg to do it, and he kind of just settled it.
I don't think it was that last one.
It wasn't the last one.
Can we replay the tape? Somebody must remember, right?
Then you should have it.
That's why I'm wondering if we actually made it. I thought we did, because I thought it was. Because I think you did second the last one, and I thought it was, I think it was you. Let's go with John and Eric.
All right, thank you. Will you willing to do that?
They were happy, they were happy about it.
Okay.
It's a little dollar figure.
Thank you for mentioning, thank you for mentioning that. Because we would have been scrambling to find that later. All right, yes, unless either of you have something else to bring up?
Yeah, that was it. So what do you report?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, well, we'll skip right to Paul then, thank you very much, ladies. And, uh, facilities, uh, all the, all the work that's going on here this summer, give us a quick update.
Okay, so we've had a busy summer so far. Start out with the track, we had, uh, some money from last year and this year, so we've done quite a bit of repairs to the track and took the long jump out there, and, uh, the work is in progress right now and is expected to be finished next Friday. Weather dependent, of course, we've had such good weather. And, uh, then we're, the main water lines, everybody.
Hold off, go back to the track, Paul.
Yep.
The track, I, I've heard some things, you know, I don't think we've got the right professionals out there. I don't think, MVU don't have the, I don't want to word it to be nice. We don't have track, too many track people at MVU.
They don't have maintenance or.
Well, I know, I'm talking of getting the track ready, and I, I looked, they said they're going with the white stone, just what's on there. You got to make lines out there, Dennis. You need something like Jay's Softball Field. I went down and looked at that today, something with colorful in there. You, you got to, and, and that's something, we started on that track, you know, we've got to keep going. You know, we've got to keep going, get that ready for home meets. And that's my biggest push, and you're going to do a little bit, but then you're going to tear apart some of what you've done, because there's high jump pits you got to go in, and you got, I, I think we're.
We need to plan.
We find money, Dennis, for everything else. I think we got to find some money and get that job done. You know, I went around there today and it's, it's not much, it don't look like you done too much, you know? And, but, you know, we don't have a track person out there. Not, not ditching nobody, you know, we've got softball coaches and all the other coaches, but we don't have a down, you know, we got to get that track done. And, and, you know, thirty thousand into it, it, it's still, it's still going to look like, we still ain't going to better have a home meet next year. You know, and, and I think we've got to do something to move on, you know, and, and do we have carryover? We found carryover to spend sixty-two thousand in the GMX, you know? Let's find something to get that track done. That track looks the same, and I said it before, as it did in nineteen seventy-one. You look at the pictures, you know, it's time.
Thousand, but voted for upgrades, so.
You know, we talked just a little bit about that.
Yeah.
That white track is not exactly what it's going to look like, because I know that they've got the red clay coming that they do the, uh, field with, do the track with, that's being done tomorrow.
Are they putting the red, because, because he told me that when I went out there, that it was going to be white.
No.
It isn't, okay, long.
So what's going to happen is during the first part of this week, they're putting in weakening tiles to drain the center of the track out, so as it tips in, and then they're going to be doing the final grade on. doing the final grade onto it, and then they're gonna be using that uh, clay of some type, that red clay.
Yeah.
The same thing is in the softball field.
Okay, and they do that, and and you know, I think in in the track, it needs to be done, you know, you get your high jump, your pole vault pit, all your pits should be all done so they can have a, you know, we keep putting this up and up, and you know, I want to be able to see a home meet there, you know, this going to BFA is is okay, but you know, I think we need to have our own, you know, and um.
While we're talking about track though, I'm sure you've noticed that now that the track is enlarged a little bit more, that four wheeler trail is right on the edge of that track, and I guess I'm concerned about that. So what I'm gonna do is probably take the tractor and knock the bank back a little bit further so I can try to get the four wheelers a little further away, but I think that if we don't fence the whole back property, we should at least do that section, because otherwise somebody's gonna track me and that four wheeler comes down through, I'm afraid there's gonna be a tragedy out there sometime.
You know, and and you know, like I said, I've dealt with cross country out there for for 22 years and and the cross country, you know, we've had some close calls, but I can say one thing about those kids, when there's a cross country meet, you don't see them. You know, I don't know what it is about cross country meets, but you see them in the other day, but when there's a meet, they pretty much behave, you know.
It's just a concern and observation of mine.
Yeah, you know, and and I understand that, but I think if we're gonna do work out on that track, we've got to get that thing ready to go, you know, and while we're doing it, I heard last month, while we're doing the gym, we need a a a batting cage and we need, we spent uh, we spent 62,000 extra last week, last month, you know, so I'm saying, if we're gonna spend 62,000 there, people, I'm gonna say, I had a person call me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give her Greg's phone number so they can call.
It is, and that's. I've got to make sure that it's like a professional track, so.
Yeah, you know.
So we are stressing that to John, and he, John is the one that's actually managing that person itself there.
And 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 that's all good, but all I'm saying is, Paul, I think we've got to find something, that's what I'm bringing up tonight, to see if I can get back in from some of the board members to, as long as we're on it, don't let it set all winter, you know, because we're still not gonna, what they do, we still aren't gonna be able to have a home meet next spring, so why can't we keep going, you know?
Do we need, well, how much more do we need? I know when we started talking, you know, the 30,000 was a drop in the bucket, we knew that, but I don't know, I mean, now we've got the bond, that we've started.
Thing is, is I'm I'm not an expert track, I'll I'll admit that, but what we need is somebody, I I thought that we're supposed to have a track committee that was supposed to give us the suggestions, and this is kind of where we're at at this point.
Yeah, and and you know, there is, and and I think we gotta sit down and, you know, we need some safety nets up, you know, we're gonna need safety nets, we're gonna, you know, the holes for safety nuts around the discus pit.
Yeah.
You know, we're gonna need, we're gonna need something for a a pole vault thing. I I I see he did something, he took the black top up out there.
Yeah.
And um, oh, we need a place for high jump, we got cement at the high jump pit, that's gonna have to come up, because we did have a time, one time, that a kid fell off and whacked his head on the cement, and and they said we had to do away with that, and I I know that's still sitting there, so that's gonna come up, so we can make, and and while you're laying.
Sounds like we need a good plan.
Yeah, while you're laying your track, you should at the same time, put that same type of clay down for the high jump pit, you know, you know, that's what, you know.
So high jump pit, they, it's not actually the clay that you use, I just learned about that today, is there's a kind of a special sand that they use, and that is actually coming in too right now.
Probably for the.
Not the, not the high jump pit, you're taking longer.
Oh, longer.
Okay, yeah, I guess you, you've never been to main track meet, have you?
No. I'm not a zaccharic person, though.
It sounds like we need to put some things together so we can get a price on what it might.
And that's the thing, is to get the track committee back together and come up with where we want to be in the next year.
Right, you know, I, you know, and that's what, you know, I I think we need to look into something like that, and you know, because you you're telling, we want to have a home meet, we want to have everything, and I can tell you for pits, I I priced them the other day during lunch, and pole vault pits are $19,000. That's just the pits. That ain't talked in the stands or anything like that.
The approach has to be paved too, doesn't it?
Uh, there's, yeah, I don't know if it's paved or it's gonna have, it's gonna have like a a runway.
Be like a traction.
It doesn't have, doesn't have to be paved.
It don't have to be paved, but it's gonna have a, it's gonna have a good, it could have a one, there's one of those tarps out there that they bought, you could use a tarp or, you know, but yeah, it's uh, so it's things like that, and you know, you start looking at the equipment and everything, you know.
So I would suggest get ahold of John and get the committee back together so that we can start talking about this at at some of the future board meetings.
It sounds like you got about five, five different things you need out there.
Yeah.
Let's find out what it is, and let's get it done.
Yeah.
Yep.
Of course, those jock heads, so you know.
Yep.
So.
So keep the ball rolling.
So so I can get ahold of somebody or?
Here, here's a good place to start it, but it's uh, somebody's gotta keep the ball rolling, and it's not gonna be me, so, so it might as well be you, and yeah, work with John and with Paul and John, I would say at least come up with a plan and uh.
I'd like to see a couple other board members.
Yep.
You know.
Yep. Who's not here?
I took note of it and talked to John on Monday.
Somebody needs to get ahold of me and I, you know, I'm willing to, you know, I'm on vacation the next two weeks.
Perfect. There are all kinds of time.
Thanks, thank you, Paul.
If you need some ideas.
Right.
Yeah, I will.
He's very knowledgeable about that now.
Yeah, I'm sure you'd see them all, so, I assume you've seen all the track facilities.
All right. I I I like one, like, I'd like to see a track like Burlington. Only $4 million.
We're gonna strike that from the camera. That may not be good for you. You definitely won't get reelected. All right, so that's the track.
On to some of the other projects, we, as you, as you're jogging in, you might have noticed the water work for the new water line, they actually excavated out a bunch of trees at the end of the road, and they started at this end, and they laid the uh, water line down, they're halfway down in front of the houses right now, and uh, I believe, talking to the engineer, that it's probably gonna be possibly two weeks before they're close to doing the hookup, if everything goes according to plan and things.
Yeah, they're gonna cross right in front of the law firm road?
Someplace down the law firm road, that's where they're gonna be connecting to. And uh, so I'm not exactly sure when they're gonna do that, because they gotta get down there, and we've got a blue pipe coming out of the ground, so once they've got the pipe all laid out, they pressure check it, if they're good with their pressure check, then they'll be connecting the water there, and all we've got to do is open a valve up here.
And do you know if they're gonna bore under the road, or they're gonna?
I have no idea, usually that's kind of a preferred nothing, they're going underneath paved roads.
Big pipe to bore.
Yeah, it is big, I bet you it's, it's gonna be probably eight inch pipe at least, maybe six inch, it's large.
Are they gonna keep that open, and now are you gonna do anything with that section where they cleared out, or?
Well, we don't, I'd like to use that, but I gotta get the survey to come in, because we don't own much of that property right there.
Now, does the church still own that?
No, church owns over here by the dumpster.
Okay, but the church does, does own a section?
They own.
You know, the wood line where the pit, baseball field is?
Yeah.
And the driveway coming to the pit?
Yeah.
That corner right there, there's five acres, it's owned by Interfaith Council. Well, it was, I'm not sure what the town's gonna do with it, because is it set up, I I tried to purchase it at one time, and um, it seems the way it's set up, that nobody knows who actually owns it.
Wasn't, wasn't it one of the parishioners in IG at one time?
It is, there's a lady in Ohio that was the last one alive that's on the thing, I talked with her, and she's willing to give it to us, but she can't legally do it, because we hired a law firm out of Burlington to to research that for us, and uh, so it's it's kind of a a lot where I think that at some point in time, the town is probably gonna either put it for tax sale or something like this, because right now.
Is it swamped or hiked?
Uh, that's swamped.
Well, if it's church, I can't please protect sale, because it's actually.
Well, to see the way the deeds read back, is it reverted after, if they, nobody used it within five years, it was supposed to revert back to the construction company that uh, sold it to them or gave it to them from St. Albans, but that company hasn't been in existence since 1994, and I haven't been able to locate the company, and so we've done a lot of uh, legwork on trying to acquire the property, but it's just something that we can't really do legally.
Well, let me ask you a question, I have a couple parishioners that have children over here who are asking me, Father Rob, what's going on from school, you're on the board? I said, well, that's the water line, and so my my question to you is, with all the things that we're doing and that the public authorized us to do financially, do we, is there ever even in the messenger or something, a kind of brief of what's going on in MVU or are, you know, projects that are occurring, nothing elaborate, I don't want to put a lot of play or anything like that, but you know, kind of add a glance where we are with.
Well, we could do this, I know that we've already talked to the messenger about when we get ready to open the gym and talk about summer projects and things like that, and maybe what we can do is kind of put a up to date uh, for our projects, a little burb in the messenger or something like that.
Nothing complicated, just just something to say, this is what's going on.
Okay.
Even if it's a timeline.
Just easy, make it easy, make it, add a glance, you know, waterline going in, that's why the trees are down, you know, something real easy to read.
Well, I didn't expect the water line to actually go in till later this fall, so this was kind of a surprise to me too.
Yes.
But it was something we were working on, and now that they've updated that, we've gotta do a little updating to our main service, because um, we need to meet some water codes and things like that, so.
Did we chip those trees for the boil?
No, I had nothing to do with that stuff, I, they came in and they just started cutting and.
It's another tree scrape.
Yeah, but we will be purchasing some chips in October and stuff like that. Next on the list is our gym, we've removed all the bleachers, we started in the process of patching and painting the ceiling, the painter should be done in about a week, week and a half, by the looks of it, we're lining things up with the floor guy, so as soon as he's done, the floor guy's gonna come in and strip and paint the new floors, get that all ready, the bleachers are supposed to be here sometime in October, so that we kind of gave them a drop dead date of, I believe it was November 11th that they had to be completed in there, so we're kind of working backwards from that.
So Paul, you said strip, but are are they sanding it?
They're sanding it down completely and changed the colors, and some of the colors are are gonna be actually different color stains, so that instead of putting tape down for certain lines, like for tenant, uh, for badminton and stuff, there'll actually be a different stained line so that it'll be there permanently, and and so there's been a lot of thought how the floor is gonna be set up.
So as far as is that floor, I know it was sanded down one other time, right?
So it, I believe it was sanded down once, looking at it with Joel from Danaher Floors, he said that we probably have one of the better floors around, because it's five quarter floor, and the first sanding didn't even bring it down to an inch, so he said, we probably got at least three good sandings left on that floor.
Okay, because I I I know, I know they usually say that you're good for 40 years with two sandings and then you're, but but he said there's.
He said that what we have is we have a superior floor when they put it down, because now what they use is they use a a three quarter floor, and um, so he said, you've actually got a half an inch more uh, material than a new floor going in right now.
So are are they gonna sand where the bleachers were, are they gonna sand them down a little more?
Everything's gonna, yes, they'll they'll even it all out and feather it back and stuff like that, because there was one standing, but I can tell you, when we took them out, Richard, you could barely see the difference in in the floors, so there's just a slight difference they gotta make up.
So as my other question, sorry I have too many questions.
Sure.
Now, they say they're gonna put volleyball nets in now, you're gonna put the ones where you set the pipe in, the ones they got there now you have to screw in, right?
Well.
They're gonna take those out?
Those are already out, if you go down, everything's taken out, what they're gonna do is replace the boards, they're gonna do the painting, and then they're gonna put the the sockets in, there's six sockets, so there's gonna be a tournament uh, section, and there's gonna be two practice sections.
Yeah.
So you can actually have three practices.
So what there is, the drop in ones, right?
Right, correct.
Okay, yeah.
It's gonna be nice.
It is gonna be nice. Other projects going on, we have eight forty-one that the floor is done, we've got LED lights that we've put in, and um, we're gonna put in for the rebates on the LED lights, and new labs just came in on last Friday, I believe it was, so we're gonna be installing those at the next coming week, and they've got a new exhaust and fume hood in there so that everything that they do, they'll be able to do their experiments in a vault and loaded area, and so it should be a pretty nice looking room when we get all done. The the floor is already complete, so um, once, once we get it all set, next board meeting, we'll take a little tour. I'm pretty proud of it, it looks very nice.
Now, I see you're in the process of waxing other floors.
Some of the other floors.
Now, that's something you're not gonna happen.
We're not gonna wax. This floor, once we put it in, uh, we don't have to recode it, we don't have to wax it, so the maintenance saving is huge. We started doing this in JPOD, uh, we won't be able to do any in JPOD just for the summer things that were happening over there with some of the Chinese students that came, and our crossroads at Grand and Texochite Forest, so we we just can't do any floors over this year, but our goal is, it's not the worst floors to wax is in JPOD, is to put it all with epoxy style floors in.
You talking about the steel grax and garage finish?
Yeah, yeah, it's the perfect floor, because um, there's virtually no maintenance to it at all. And so it makes, so the rooms that we have it in, we haven't even had to take the furniture out like we normally do to wax, move the stuff to one side, buff it up, slide it to the other side, do the same thing, and set the clots back up, it's gonna be a big labor savings once we get more clots on for this.
It probably isn't, it's probably one of the least expensive coatings that there is, which is tile or carpet.
Well, it's it's a little bit more than tile and carpet, but the thing is, is you've gotta look at the labor as far as going, man hours going in cleaning these floors, and it's got us all over top of it.
Yeah, probably the lines are better.
So, that's. So that's about it for projects. Any questions or?
There was a concern about the connector going into JPOD. Now, we decided to put it off because of the skill for the work that we're gonna need to do out there.
Right. So what it was, was the architects didn't think that they could timely get it done so that it could actually be done this fiscal year. So what's happening is, is they're gonna be coming in this fall, doing the drawings and putting it out to bid in December so that we can actually have it installed shortly after graduation.
We're planning on construction of the woodchip boiler building at the same time as the connector.
And actually, the woodchip boiler can actually take, um, once we find the vendor or contractor that this, we set the bids on, they can actually start the woodchip boiler process probably as soon as the ground thaw is out in first part of April. Because our ground thaw is quickly here, so there's no reason they can't put up some fencing and start that project right off.
Right.
Um, in, on that, running the thing, are you, there was some talk about a tunnel. Wouldn't it be better to have a tunnel underneath there instead of just running your pipes? And so you don't have to take that building and move it. Once that building's there, it's there and-
Well, we are talking about that with the architects and stuff. So that's all gonna be into the concept design and stuff. So when they go out to bid, they'll, they'll have it both ways, I believe. That's why I asked them so that they have it. So it's either removable or that we put a tunnel in.
I think it'd be better for a tunnel, you know, because you're talking to move that building if you had to ever had to. It's just more-
Well, the problem is, is there's some things we can't put in a tunnel. The main water line goes around there for the fire hydrants and we've got a gas line that goes underneath there. So, so it's something that we can't completely put everything into the tunnel. So at some point in time, if something happened, it's possible that that building has to be moved. That's why the talk was that we could have it set up so that if we needed to move it, we could get a crane come in and set it aside, do whatever repairs and then set it back in.
It just seemed like it'd be an awful big building to bring in with a crane and it's a little area. You know, I just think, Paul, it's something we've gotta look at a little bit better before we do something, you know, and-
So I've got pictures of what we did when we did the woodchip boiler building. So maybe I'll, I'll get some of those together so that the board can actually see what's underneath there and the depths that some of these are at so that you'll have a better idea what I'm talking about. Because it's, it's not like just one or two pipes. There's quite a bit of pipes that actually go around the building and just don't go to the woodchip boiler.
But a lot of those woodchip boilers, I know ours in Richford, ours are in a tunnel.
Yeah.
You know, ours are in a tunnel and we can get to them and, you know, they go the whole length of our gym, you know?
Yeah. We can do the woodchip boiler. That'd be the easy part. But the problem is, is how are we gonna deal with the main water lines and stuff which are not going across the woodchip boiler. They're actually going around our building. So-
So this'll all be designed by our architect, correct?
It is.
Yeah.
Before we set that quote. So I mean, they could come up with options.
Yeah.
Right.
That's exactly what we're doing. We're looking for a couple of different options and that was one of the things that we did talk about is the pipes in a tunnel. So they do know that that's one of the concepts we want to look at.
Because, you know, and I've got, again, I don't know why I get the phone calls, but I got the phone call where we, we had a lot of problems with, with safety and shootings and all that. And one parent called me up and said, "Hey, shouldn't you be, shouldn't that be the top priority of getting a building up before you do anything else, before you do the gym?"
Well-
You know, it is, that's, you know, I'm telling you what I was told.
No, and I agree with it. I'd like to have done it this summer too, but it's just that talking to the architects and the timing to get contractors, because we'd have put that out to bid, contractors would already have their jobs and we'd probably pay three times the price for somebody that's actually looking for it. Because what happens is, that's what happened with some of our trenching work. They were looking to actually go to Elta Daylight with our woodchip, with our boiler room. We put it out to bid at a time when everybody already had their jobs lined up and it was just astronomical figure that came back. So we need to be timely when we put this out to bid.
And it's all about timing because we couldn't really go out to bid until we had an approved bond vote. And so by then it was too late.
So it is something that we are starting for. And safety is one of our biggest concerns.
Should be our number one priority for our next project. Should be our number one priority for next year's projects.
It is. And that's, well, as soon as school gets out, that's when we'll be starting that project. Because it will be part of that whole scope of the work. Any other question?
Thank you, Paul.
All right. I'll see y'all later. Oh, you have a question?
I have a comment, actually. I'm a parent and my daughter is on the softball team. And this year, we came to the field and noticed there was a lot of rocks and stuff that looked like that snow blowed over the fence. And, you know, being a few other parents, put it upon ourselves before our first game and cleaned it all up so we looked presentable. So what I'm asking is if we can be mindful, even though it is July, it's not gonna snow tomorrow, but to be mindful when the snow does fly.
So where is this exactly?
Uh, the back parking lot. I think it's the senior parking area.
Oh, okay.
The field's off that.
Yeah.
So to be mindful not to be directing our snow blower, the dust onto our sports fields.
Well, the whole problem with that is we don't have much of an option to plow snow. You see it's all fenced in and stuff. It's not like we can melt it or get rid of it any other way. We'll, we'll do the best we can, but I can't make any guarantees. Depends on the snowpack. You know, if we get a big snowpack, sometimes we gotta come back in and just push everything back. And sometimes it does go out into the mall field.
Pushing it back is one thing. Snowblowing it sixty feet onto the field and further up there is a different issue.
Okay. We'll take a look at that.
Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
See y'all later.
Have a good evening.
Later.
Thank you. Let's close your door.
Yes, indeed. So as Paul mentioned, JPOD's been the center of activity here this summer for students. We have our summer academic program happening in JPOD. We offer specific support in literacy and mathematics. Our math support this year is pre-teaching for algebra and geometry to set students up for success. And the literacy program's an extension of the reading support we offer during the year. We also have our Crossroads program, which is housed in JPOD and offers all sorts of activities for our students. Past two weeks have been particularly busy in JPOD. Our Spiral program, the program that we offer through Spiral International with the Chinese students, took place last week and this week, two different groups of students. They are middle school age and the second group is headed back this weekend. And they have been doing all sorts of different activities with some of our students and teachers. And they've been going on some field trips. They visited, and they've been to Burlington. They went to UBM, down to the waterfront. Different, there are different expected field trips that should take place during the program. So that's been going on this week and last week. The other piece I have to update you on is our faculty and staff have been very engaged in professional learning over the summer. They've been taking part in lots of different opportunities. Many of them are pursuing coursework in their content areas, but also we've sent larger groups to take part in workshops about things like inquiry, specifically in humanities, social studies, and English. Developmental design is a middle school program in kind of building community. We had two of our middle school teams participated in that in, at the end of June. And they were very excited about how well that went and had lots of ideas for how they would use it. We have our newer math teachers headed to a math best practices training in Milton at the end of August. The SU's been offering some co-teaching training. We have some folks participating in that. Richard asked about Think Kids. We sent two of our behavioral staff to the Think Kids training in Boston. And then Think Kids is going to be with us in August for in-service to give the keynote and then train our faculty in the afternoon on the twenty-third. And we also have several teachers taking advantage of the AP Institute in St. John'sburg for learning what they need to teach AP courses, including our new AP offering, which is AP US History. So we've got a very busy faculty this summer, which is excellent. Oh, and I have one more thing. It was a new thing. Just this week, we were contacted by Jay Ramsey, who is the career in technical education person at the AOE. And he was coordinating site visits across the state with members of the governor's cabinet and members of the agency of education. And they're going to be in Franklin County on August seventh. And they will be visiting MBU first in the morning. And we don't have lots of details yet, but we're coordinating with Jim Nishi to make sure that when they are here, they are able to see the offerings that we have. And hopefully we can have some students and family members.
That's August seventh?
August seventh.
Yep.
And they're gonna be here in the morning. I think nine-thirty is when they're gonna start. And then I think they're headed to Cold Hollow after that and they're ending the day at North Boston.
Thank you.
We've had some training at Holy Trinity, I believe, and they were very excited downstairs because I could hear them.
I think that was the developmental design training.
Very excited and lots of happy teaching.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jen. Appreciate you being here.
Good to be here.
Wow, this is the moment we've been waiting for.
Oh, yeah.
I've been so forward to this.
Here I have, that's for board members. I put together a quick newsletter for you. Let me stick it up on the, and Jen covered some of it. This is being difficult, just when I'm not really good. Here. So the first page is just what Jen was speaking about, the Spiral camp and how successful the first week and I hear the second week is very successful as well of the students coming from China and the experiences they had that were planned, that were part of the day with the group around the rocketry and visiting farms and going to visit colleges. But also the experiences people had with their host families doing other activities to have just been really rich. And it seems to have been a really successful couple of weeks. And-
I'm sure, I'm sure they said that the highlight of your trip was the Boucher Farm.
Absolutely. Which I understand the dog was the highlight.
Dog was the-
The house. They were very excited. The other, the second picture that I have was a new opportunity this year where I guess it was the Vermont Community Foundation, the Spark Connecting Communities grant allowed there to be a theater camp for a week here at MBU. And it involved kids from grade two to twelve. And it involved mentoring and leadership and a lot of self-advocacy and public speaking and reading aloud activities. And they put on The Wizard of Oz. And I guess it was a very successful week. And I just think it's the kind of, kids from every school participated. So my thanks specifically to Ernie Hemingway and Rena, I'm gonna say it in private for this, for their hard work with these kids.
My daughter was part of that.
Was she?
It was, she got a lot out of it because she was able to make new friends that she was going to be going to school with.
Yes.
This fall. And reconnect with some friends that she'd been distant with, you know, for various reasons. But and just meet another group of kids on a different level other than sports or something, you know. So it was really good, actually.
And it's the kind of thing, as you mentioned, is a great opportunity to transition kids here to middle school so that they get familiar to the campus, they get familiar with other kids from the communities. And it's, it's just a great enriching opportunity.
And it was free. It was all because of a Connecting Community grant or something
Yes, absolutely. So free is great. I like that phrase. The other piece that I wanted to talk about a little bit is the Vermont State Board of Education meeting that took place on the eighteenth of July. We had a really good turnout from our supervisory union. A lot of folks from Franklin, folks from Highgate, also, of course, a lot of folks from Montgomery and Sheldon and other, Ennisburg and Richford. But I think our Highgate, Franklin, and Sheldon turnout was probably the largest of the growth. You were there.
Yeah, it was, we probably made up at least half of the people that were there. I'd say we had probably forty to fifty people from the SU and from, you know, any teachers to parents to select board members, everybody.
It was a nice cross group of stakeholders. And I thought it was a very impressive group. I think that Emily Norris, Julia Callen, and Sean Stevens did a great job presenting in, for Sheldon at the end. And I thought Bob Berger and Connie Bayor did a terrific job starting first off to present, which I think was the toughest spot of all to be in.
They kind of set the tone.
But they did set the tone. The board was asking very difficult questions and they definitely had an assumption of, you know, prove your, prove we're wrong in their questions. And I thought that everybody did a great job of presenting facts and the community did a wonderful job of presenting their concerns. And we'll see what comes of that. The, the state board is going to be meeting again in August and again in September in different regions with different groups of people coming to speak. We will be having another Act Forty-Six committee meeting likely on the thirteenth of August. That has not been confirmed yet, but I just reached out to Bob about that. I know that there, that statewide Act Forty-Six school committee is having a meeting too. And so I think that there was some information that they were gonna be getting from that. But there's a lot to think about and do, but the next meeting will likely be mid-August.
Was there any sense from the state board whether they were competitive, but were they listening? Were they open?
I know. I see by your face, I'm trying to-
The thing is, I think based from a supervisory union perspective, I think everybody put their best for Ford. It was the best that we could have done. There was a lot of compelling statements. There, there was a lot of statements made where they were calling out the board on things that they could not answer. They did not have, there were some questions that they asked where we were led to believe that they've been out of the loop as well, where they should have known these things. Because we kind of looked at them and there were some chuckles from the crowds saying, you know, "How can you be asking this? This is coming, you're supposed to be doing that," you know. But I think everybody knows what the outcome's going to be. I think the AOE's already made their mind up, but it was a very good opportunity to get this out in the public, on camera, in the newspapers.
Yeah.
And really puts them up against the wall to make the right decision. So.
You know, one of the things that struck me is, I think it was the state board chair who kept saying, "But how are you going to get all the adults in the same room together and make those decisions? How are you going to ensure?" You know, and she kept using that phrase to really express her idea that separate, distinct boards can't come together thoughtfully. And, you know, I don't know that there was enough, that, you know, I don't know that we had enough opportunity to really say, and yet we are doing many of those things and here's why. And so my thought is always, you know, they could give us- And so I, my thought is always, you know, they could give us an opportunity to take our study and address some of their concerns. You know, we're not explicit enough about how we can act together in any which ways. What would you like to see? We can talk about that. So it would be interesting to see if they would give us an opportunity to...
An opportunity to execute some of those goals that are outlined in AGS.
So I don't know. They didn't seem particularly open.
Okay. You surprised me.
But I was very impressed. And I have to say, as somebody who is a social, a political science person, I just love anytime I see public turning out, talking about public education and a commitment to community schooling in such a positive way.
That's the way it's supposed to work.
What was interesting as well was that at first, it completely ignored the public. And somebody raised the concern that, we can't hear you. You've got your backs to us. If you're going to speak, you need to speak to us as well and address us. And there was no PA system. And one gentleman says, I do this for a job. I hook up PA systems. If the school has the equipment, I can go ahead and do that. Of course, there was no talk of that. They didn't want any part of that. They were just going to say it up and speak loud and try to address everybody. But it was a short time after. There were speakers and microphones that came out and they hooked up a PA system and we were good to go after that. But it was later found out that somebody was talking to one of the staff members at Newark School and was directed to remove all of the PA equipment the day before.
Huh, that I hadn't heard.
That's interesting.
Well, we'll have next steps. My ask, question to Bob was if we could have an Act 46 meeting before the Franklin Northwest meeting on the 15th and then inform boards, that board about next steps and move on from there. One thing I wanted to bring before the board is that there is a, I was asked to write a letter of support for the grant submission that the town of Highgate, the village of Swanton, and some other partners are putting forward to study extending water to the airport. And I just did not want to write a letter without, of support for anything coming from the school without discussing it with all of you. The proposal is really a very preliminary step. They're writing with a lot of future development in mind and hoping that there will be opportunities for more industrial business and technology, perhaps aeronautic mechanics. And that that would allow, just as we had Bob last month talking about internships, could we have some very rich internship opportunities for MVU students just next door? And of course, we support economic development in our community, but also opportunities for our students to have really good work-based learning experiences. So I did create a draft. I don't know if...
Did you get it? Get that back?
Did you give it back to me?
I didn't give it back. Oh, yeah.
But I do have a draft if people would like to look at it. But I just wanted to, I don't know whether you want to make a motion in support of my writing a letter in support of that or an FYI. But I, I didn't want to do it without bringing it to you.
Right. We did have a quick discussion about it on the phone. I think, I think it's a, I think it's a good thing. I don't think there's any reason not to support it. It's, I guess, just because it's next door to the school, I don't think it's going to, it's going to hurt us any. It's, the water line has an opportunity to go by. It's, it's at the end of the driveway now. I guess they're just, it sounds like they're looking for some support and a good reason to, to keep going down the road. Yeah, I think any development, that's a good place to develop in my mind. So I think if there's an opportunity for development, it's going to help the town of Highgate for sure. I was in favor of it. And we did, I guess Greg read the draft and I read it. And I think this...
You don't have it on your computer, do you?
I have copies.
You have the copies.
Oh, do I have it on here? Let's see. Can I get? I'll have to find it. I don't have it right here, but I'll find it.
Yeah, is there any other thoughts on, on supporting it? I mean, we're not, we're not doing anything, we're not digging in the hole.
Right. I'll also point out that the grant is to finance a study. So it's not, it's the preliminary question.
So for that reason, I would have no questions understanding that.
Right.
Because that gets us going.
I feel, I don't think we're in danger of having Vermont National Guard put their jets out here. No sound issues.
That would be cool, though.
I'd say that kind of tug and cheat, that would be kind of...
We just couldn't have classes for four hours out of the day.
Does the line need to be going through our news program?
No, it's not a problem.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Just, just to be sure, you, you know how when folks are applying for these kinds of community development grants, you have to talk about the impact to school, community, what the demographics and unemployment look like? You have to do a whole picture of the area. And so the school connection was, was a part. They were looking to enhance that grant.
Are they requesting the same for like Highgate schools and Swanton facilities?
I, they just approached me and I...
That's what I'm curious, is it SU or is it MVU?
I brought it here partly because of timing, but also because MVU is the one that would be most directly impacted because there'd be that link with our students possibly in the future. I mean, I could also bring you to the Franklin Northwest Board.
Yeah, I guess, I'm just curious if we're the right people to give that support.
That's what I was wondering, you know? Should it be, are, are we doing something? Should it be Highgate's that board or should, you know? I, I don't know, you know? Are we, that's the only thing I got to say. Are we saying something that could, could hurt us down the line?
Oh, I don't think it hurt us, but it should be good for the whole SU, I guess.
I think they're only taking us into consideration because we're neighbor and border of whether the development could potentially happen.
Okay.
I guess if they need more support, they'll look further. Yeah. So, yeah, I guess a motion probably wouldn't be a bad idea to authorize the superintendent...
Yeah, I could make a motion to direct the superintendent to write a letter of support. Rob would second that.
All right. So we've got a motion by Greg and a second by Rob. Any discussion? All in favor of motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much. The last thing I want to do is introduce Tamara Kelly, which I should have done at the beginning, but I was thinking about the science presentation. And Tamara is our new payroll specialist at central office and has done board secretary work before. And we didn't even know that. And so she has agreed to come on and do this role for us. And we're very excited about that.
That's spectacular.
I think it speaks highly of you that you actually admitted that at some point.
Must have slipped out.
No.
Thank you for being here. See if she comes back the second time.
I've been over 11 years in captive management. It's a whole other ballgame.
Oh, okay.
Maybe if we're out by 10, she'll come back.
Maybe. All right.
So that's it.
That was it for you.
Dennis, we got a couple of teachers retired this year?
We did. We did.
Been here for how many years?
Yep. Gary and...
Yep, so Gary was 41 years, Gary Schur, I think. And Jane, I think, was also 41 years, Jamie Abraham, but not consecutive. She had a spell in the late 70s, early 80s where she wasn't with us, but that came out.
Yeah, yeah. For as many young teachers that come and go, I guess we've had a few, we had a few that stayed a long time. I know when I first got on the board, it had been quite a few years since I'd been in school here, and it was amazing how many teachers were still here from, from the early 80s.
I can, I can tell you that Gary has purchased a lift. He's painting the side of the house that faces me. And when I talked to him today, I was chatting with him, he was out taking fishing wire and repairing an old fishing seat so he could redo it. So he's making good use of his time.
There you go, yeah. He'll miss it from the last week of August.
I think he's going to still coach golf, so he'll want to be disconnected, which would be good.
Gary Schur, yes.
Yeah, Ennisburg.
Yeah. So your contracts list, so we do have four language teachers?
We do. That will be a one-year only because he is finishing his provisional, so we want to make sure that that was upfront about it being a one-year only. But that was the position that was advertised in seven days and...
Is it his goal to get...
It was his goal. He's in a plan already to do it. And all he needed was the supervised internship portion. So he's very excited to be here. Elliot Lafferty is his name. And...
Spanish?
Spanish.
Super. Yeah, those are hard ones.
They are. Those four language positions are hard to find, and I know you, we were very pleased.
That's good. So I guess...
We just gave him the motion for you to sign the contract.
Motion to authorize the board chair to sign the contract for four language teacher. Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Richard. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Greg. All in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Motion, Gary. All right.
Before we move on, did you do the minutes from June 14th? You've done it already?
I did, yes.
Okay. I know I missed the first couple of minutes of the meeting. I had some changes on here.
Oh, well.
Do you want to mail them to me and we can see if we can...
Or we can take a minute and...
Yeah.
You've got your copy already marked up?
Yes.
Yeah. I've got it right here. We can do it after.
No, I can pass it. I'll take these.
Make sure and...
You want to see what they are? Thank you so much, Becky. You want to review?
Well, if it's been approved, we should...
Well, it's not approved, Gary.
No, I mean, if the board's already approved the minutes, you can't just...
All right, first of all, our motions. Included you in the vote and you traditionally...
All right.
So it should be 6-0.
Okay.
I thought that when, I'm not going to, I won't open that again. Okay, and the financing facilities, check warrants, motion to approve checks from May 12th to June 18th, amount of that. Then it goes right to, Richard Flint mentioned, to a motion to approve the check warrant from June 2nd. There's no action listed for the May 12th to June 18th check warrant. So there should be, there should be a motion maker and second listed and vote.
I'll have to dig around for that information. There you go. It'll be out there.
July 1st, starting July 1st, there's a email.
Yeah, there should be, it should be the visual...
Yeah, but we'll start till July 1st.
What?
We'll start till July 1st.
Well, we still have, the, the studio still tapes it. The tape is out there somewhere.
Right, right. It's just not on our...
We can check it.
Right on our website.
No, it wouldn't be on the website, but I mean, we can...
No, but we can call them to get a copy of the...
We can get a copy.
Yeah, because we, with having a one-time-only note taker, I think, you know, that caught, there were some things that we haven't experienced, note taker.
Okay, mayhem, mayhem. I've got some information.
Okay, good. Because I wasn't taking notes.
Which one were you talking about? You weren't supposed to be.
I'm on page...
Yep. Check warrants?
Page three.
Hi, Dave.
Financing facilities report, first paragraph.
Motion to approve check warrant from May 12th to June 18th, amount of $58,000. Richard Flint moved, approve check warrant June 2nd. Okay, so the first one, first one, it was John.
Greg, don't ignore him.
I asked for it. I asked for it. I wish he did sometimes, but I asked for the motion. John made the motion and Don seconded. So do I just write them over here?
Can you write it down there? Because I don't have a copy of your write-off.
I'm going to write that down here. It was John made the motion and Don seconded. And then the second one, it was Richard and Don. Don called second. Okay, so that's in there. So it's just the first one. John made the motion, Don seconded. And then I corrected the six to a seven, seven to a six, I mean. And vote. The other was here, the six. The new was seven. All right. Are those the big ones?
Greg? Yeah, that was the big one.
Okay.
There was something that was unclear to me.
Thank you. I'll put it in my bio.
All right.
That and the votes. The votes consistently through the issue to change the six.
So Dennis, are we just about done?
We are just about, I don't know if we have any executive session.
Yeah, I got, I got something I wanted to bring up. Another one that, that I heard out there. Your drama kids, they, they complained about, they're having to tighten the seats up in the theater and we need new seats.
Oh.
And that was...
I noticed that.
I got, I got a phone, that was my nephew that called me on that one. But he said, we're going to go tonight and make sure you mention, we spent time to tighten the seats up and they don't tighten up very good on me.
They don't very good. I guess I'd be...
Some of them are missing.
Or leaning.
Lean in. I, I know we talked about it last year that, that we were going to put, it was, it was on the agenda to do it, and I think it got slid aside. And I think that's something that, that theater needs good seats. It's got a nice floor. It looks beautiful. We got to keep it beautiful.
Yeah.
I think it was like, we had to upgrade a chunk of it, but we couldn't do it all at the same time.
If I remember right, if I remember right, we were, we couldn't get the seats in time for the start of school. And it was, we weren't budgeted for that either, but we did the floor and then we did the best we could with the seats we had. And I guess that'd be, you'll probably see Paul tomorrow, maybe that's, that's something to put in Paul's arena and see if there's anything we can do about repairing them again or...
No, Dennis, we need new ones. We need new ones, you know? It's time, you know? We stand up 40, almost 50 years, some of them seats, the buckets have been replaced, but they're, you know, we, we need to do something in there, you know? That's, that's what, when people come here, Dennis, they say, wow, look at that theater, you know? You got a beautiful theater. Let's keep it that way. You know?
We'll take that track money and buy some...
I feel myself going like this because of tears.
Take that track money and buy some...
Too hard. I think I don't want to know.
Yes, we do have one topic for executive session and we'll make that quick, I promise.
There you go.
So we're going to mention our next meeting dates. Do you want to do that?
So the next Franklin Northwest Board meeting is August 15th at 6:30 and looks like here in the MVU library. And the next MVU Board is August 16th at 7:00.
All right, Dennis, I will be checking with my daughter and my grandchildren.
Well, good for you. All right, so I think, unless somebody has anything else to add, we are going, I would entertain a motion to enter executive session for kind of a legal issue, I guess.
What type of motion?
All right, motion by Eric.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Richard. All in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. We are in executive session at 10 o'clock.